Okay, I'd like to call this meeting the Prince William County School Board to order. This meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Ms. Zargarpur?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, no discussion, please vote. Wow, there's applause, it's like our, that's our live audience for the show. Yeah. Sorry, Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? My apologies.
Yes.
Yes, okay, got it. Okay, excellent. Yes, unanimous. Next, we need a motion to enter closed session. The motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, that the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with Division Council and staff the performance, appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers, employees, and appointees under Virginia's Code Sections 2.2-3711-A, 1, and 8, and to dispose with the attendance of the superintendent and staff as necessary as provided by Virginia Code Section 22.1-69. Two, to discuss with legal counsel and take action on the placement and disciplinary appeals of specific students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711-A, 2, and 8. Three, to receive information and to discuss with Division Council and staff actual or probable litigation and specifically legal matters involving specific staff and students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711-A, 7, and 8. And four, to receive legal advice from Division Council and information from staff regarding impending legislative changes affecting school operations under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711-A, 8.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
Second.
Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session, return to open session approximately one hour. The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. Moving on to the closed session certification, a motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur?
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, that the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of March 17, 2021 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
A second.
Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote? Do I have Ms. Ralston? Yeah, there she is. Can we get the?
Hello?
Yeah, hey, how you doing? Looking good, Ms. Ralston. How do you vote?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. And we are moving, what do we got?
I have eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Eight yes unanimous, motion passes. Moving on to closed session, action items, a motion is in order. Ms. Zargarpur?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in the closed session.
Do you have a second? Ms. Wall, seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, and...
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Great, moving on to the next item. Ms. Zargarpur?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve OSMAP's recommendation for the reassignment of student SR21-048.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams? Any discussion? Okay, as seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Great. Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passes. So, at this point, I would like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board, the open meeting, to order. This meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under the Virginia Code 2.23708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. At this point, we will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a student here, would you, right, if any of the students would like to come to the podium and lead us in the pledge? Mr. Yousifzai?
Come right up to the podium here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. Ms. Zargarpur, motions in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ralston. And very good. What do you got?
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Motion passes. Next, it's time to adopt the consent agenda. Motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur?
I recommend that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, citizen comment time. Due to the COVID-19 state of emergency, illegal restrictions on the school board's authority to conduct its meetings through electronic means, unlike other public bodies meeting electronically under more expansive legal authority, all discussion at this meeting by board members, staff, citizens must be limited to agenda items. Citizens may speak on an agenda item for two minutes. When the board is able to resume regular meetings without the virtual participation permitted during the state of emergency, expanded citizen comment time will be resumed as provided by Policy 134. In the interim, citizen comment time has been reinstated on a limited basis in order to allow public comment both in person and through electronic means during the state of emergency. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments by email to the clerk who will share them with the school board. Those citizens who've signed up in advance with the school board no later than today, 4:00 PM Wednesday, March 17th, may address the school board in person or virtually electronically about matters relating to March 17, 2021 items only. There are, I guess I have one speaker who's signed up to speak in person, four who've signed up to speak virtually. Citizens are reminded, if they are not speaking on the specific agenda item for this evening's meeting, they will be asked to step down, mute it, or escorted out. Please use proper decorum manners while at the podium and/or speaking virtually. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. Please state your name and address for the record. My list, I have a list here. Oh, Dr. Kate Olson Flynn first, in person.
Happy St. Patrick's Day. I'm Dr. Kate Olson Flynn, and you have my address on file. Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board, and Dr. Walts. I want to thank you all, the end administration, for your dedication and hard work during this unprecedented time. I'm hopeful for the future. I'm here to address the plans to put kids back in the building five days a week. We have learned so much about the importance of schools, teachers, and learning this past year that I wanted to highlight only four important issues of many that I hope will be addressed in the plan going forward. Research shows that teachers in schools need time to plan effective lessons that engage all learners and help kids build community in schools. We know that scheduled teacher office hours have been a huge success in meeting individual student needs and building relationships with teachers. How will you be able to provide teachers and students time for office hours within the five-day week? We also learned firsthand that student-school connections and relationships are vital to happy and healthy students. However, the social-emotional learning takes time after a pandemic. How will you provide structures for student-to-foster community for better mental health in the five-day plan? We know the concurrent teaching method is ineffective, inefficient, and overburdens teachers' ability to meet all students' needs simultaneously. This model should no longer be used in the reopening plans. We know how important parent-school communication is for student success. Where there were issues with Canvas, it was a huge benefit for parents to have assignments and grades immediately available. How will Canvas be improved for streamlining to ensure better communication without adding on to teachers' workload? Last, we know funding is necessary to provide resources where they are most needed, and we know that there will be students who will be behind academically. So the question is, what extra resources will you, as a board, provide those schools and teachers to help those students? I thank you for considering these questions when planning for next year. Let us build upon the practices that we know help students so that next year will be better for everyone. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Stevens, you want to handle the virtual speakers, please?
Mr. Chairman, I have, the four speakers are online. Our first speaker is Jim Martin. You can go ahead and unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. I'd like to recognize all the students who have adapted to the mitigation measures on the return to learn. I'd like to recognize the staff who are teaching virtual that would prefer to be teaching in person for their adaptability, and recognize the school board and the members who have voted for the return to in-person learning, and also encourage the remainder of the school board to vote based on the science and not fear. I'd like to encourage Prince William County Schools to share its return-to-learn data with the Commonwealth and the CDC. The current dashboard shows a decrease in the number of cases and currently zero outbreaks in the school system, which suggests little to no in-person school transmission. I'd like to encourage the school board to use all available resources to return our five-day-a-week in-person instruction as soon as possible. Please don't write off the rest of this year, but at the very least, return our students to five days a week in-person instruction for next year. If virtual is still an option, I'd like to request that we discontinue concurrent instruction and have dedicated virtual and in-person teachers. This decreases the workload on the teachers and decreases interruptions for technological difficulties. Thank you, and I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maggie Hansford. You can unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Hi, my name is Maggie Hansford, and my address is on file. I want to thank you all. As I was unable to speak at the last budget markup meeting, this staff raise is historical, and I want to acknowledge the chair, the vice chair, school board members, and the superintendent for prioritizing our students and staff in this budget. This budget provides the much-needed mental health funding, tech funding, and providing our staff with a historic 5% raise. I want to thank the school board member Lori Williams for continuing to speak at board accounting supervisor meetings to ensure the needed funding is there to support this budget. Again, I want to thank the chair and vice chair for continuing to speak with me throughout the budget process, and I look forward to working with all board members in the future months preparing for next year. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Salima Drees. You can unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Hello, my name is Salima Drees. I'm a recent graduate of Prince William County Public Schools. I'm here today in reference to the proposed budget and, in particular, any budget items that grant funding to the CRO program. CROs are the last thing our schools should be prioritizing right now. Our youth need mental health resources, better food programs, and widespread access to the internet, not cops in their hallways. CROs do not create a safer learning environment. In fact, the mere presence of a CRO constantly surveilling students makes many people uncomfortable, especially students of color, LGBTQ, and disabled youth, who are much more likely to be criminalized. Children should not be criminalized anywhere, especially in a learning environment. We know that Virginia leads the nation in perpetuating the school-to-brisked pipeline. That is not an achievement. Every disciplinary infraction that a child receives in school has a deeply damaging effect on their mental health and family life and brings them one step closer to being incarcerated. Is that the reputation you want for Prince William County Schools? To be a school system where kids are traumatized and criminalized? This is an issue that cannot wait. You have the power through this budget and future budgets to keep our youth truly safe in a loving community instead of a harsh school environment with people, with armed people in the hallways constantly threatening our kids. These funds should be reinvested into programs that serve our youth, such as restorative justice spaces, mental health services, and food and housing supports. The issues that many youth deal with do not disappear at the school door, and those issues are certainly not being solved by CROs. Please take action now to protect our youth. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next and last speaker is Melissa Ridge. You can unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Ridge. I know a lot of people right now are anxious for return to normal, and much of tonight's meeting focuses on just that. But we all should have learned over this last year that some parts of normal aren't worth returning to. The Prince William County Schools budget allows for several CROs, Community Resource Officers at elementary schools, Armed Resource Officers at elementary schools, for safety. Yet no study to date has shown that armed officers in schools promote safety. What does promote safety in schools is equity. Equity includes providing necessary resources. It includes ensuring students are fed. It includes additional counselors. It means providing ASL interpreters at board meetings. Equity means hiring a diverse staff and addressing teachers' biases, and it means using a curriculum in which students see themselves. All of this requires money that we're very often told doesn't exist. I'm requesting that you strike CROs from the budget and reappropriate that money to address real school safety and equity. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last speaker, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. At this point, we'll move on to 1401, update on academic progress during the pandemic. Dr. Walts?
Thank you, Chairman Latif and members of the board. Good evening. Tonight's update comes at the request of school board members to hear directly from principals regarding academic progress and support for our students, as we have been doing since October. Please note that now that all grade levels have returned in person with a virtual option, at the request of the school board chairman, further academic updates will continue and be provided as written briefings for the school board. I will now turn it over to Associate Superintendents for Western and Eastern Elementary Schools, Ms. Jarcelin Hart and Mr. Nathaniel Provincio, who will facilitate a panel of principals who will provide a brief update on academic progress and support for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. Good evening, Chairman Latif, Madam Chair Zargarpur, and our school board. My name is Nathaniel Provincio, and I'm the proud Associate Superintendent over divisions Eastern Elementary Schools. Our school leaders have continued to do a remarkable job in guiding and leading their staff, students, and families through the pandemic. In an effort to continue to give our school communities a voice on these heroic efforts, tonight we welcome three outstanding principals to share their insights, perspectives, successes, and challenges on their efforts with transitioning from virtual instruction to in-person learning. Speaking with us tonight, we have Antoinette McDonald, Principal of Bel Air Elementary, Mary Jane Boynton, Principal of Parkside Middle School, and Brandon Boils, Principal of Potomac High Schools.
Chairman Latif, Vice Chairwoman Zargarpur, School Board, and Dr. Walts, thank you for inviting me to be a voice of my school community during this global pandemic. Greatest evening all. I am Mrs. Antoinette McDonald, the servant leader of Bel Air Elementary School. We are an intergenerational, diversely populated, high-performing, state-awarded, Title I school in Central Land. As the third smallest elementary school, I humbly lead a group of the most engaging and invested professional educators and classified personnel. I wish to thank my fantabulous staff, who continue to put students first and make families a priority during this pandemic. At Bel Air, it is every student, every day, whatever it takes. As the only school with a global and dual-language Spanish immersion program, our students work through global competencies with a focus on service through the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Our kindergarten and first-grade students enrolled in our dual-language program are thriving and growing as biliterate and bilingual students, with some of them being trilingual. At Bel Air, we are home to five self-contained special education programs, two autism and three for students with an emotional disability. These most vulnerable students and heroic staff have been in person since September 2020. We have welcomed back 48% or 181 of our 379 students over these past nine first days of school. It is so good to have our students return to the building. 70% of my staff has also returned to in-person. Our in-person environment consists of class sizes one to nine students, assigned seating in the classroom, and cafeteria with mitigations in place throughout our school building and concurrent learning. Our staff embodies interdependency, and it is most evident during our Monday collaborative learning team meetings. This is a time where all interventionists and specialists attend grade-level meetings to plan, review data, and become experts in teacher instruction and student learning. Our students continue to receive Tier II and Tier III interventions for lost learning recovery. Our kindergarten through second-grade students are performing at 79% mastery of all math standards. Our third through fifth-grade students are performing at an 81% mastery in math standards. In reading, 60% of my students are reading on or above grade level. And this summer, we'll be hosting a plethora of programs to help our students. Math recovery, reading camp, a one-to-one connective tutoring, book clubs, with student conferencing. Each student at Bel Air is an MVP, the Most Valuable Panther. You know, academic achievement is in the quality and not the quantity. Our students are receiving consistent and rigorous Tier I instruction. There are successes that should be celebrated more than just data points on a state scoreboard. Successes like having five-year-old students maintain the wearing of facial coverings throughout an entire school day, or have an 80% of screens displaying the faces of our fourth-grade students, or even consider children being able to access, log in, stay engaged in a lesson, upload and submit assignments in Canvas. And lastly, when you have a parent share their concerns of their cheating in October but is now celebrating their student's ability to use word detective eyes confidently to decode, now those are successes that I value. Along with the support of Lexia, Dreambox, Seesaw, Legends of Learning, Canvas, and Mastery Connect, our teachers are working in the 21st century at high levels. In all honesty, my staff has been able to shift, recalibrate, and rebalance. We stress the importance of schoolwork balance, but to have balance is to ensure that all is in order. The time dedicated in planning and delivering instruction to meet the needs of our students is immeasurable. With concurrent learning, it appears to be a solution, but it's not ideal. It's literally the same instruction through the use of a school-issue device moving from home to school, back to home. My staff with admirable strength stand on the front lines mentoring parents, providing homework assistance, and tapping into the emotional health of our students. Their resumes are overflowing with 21st century skill sets. My staff has become masters of multitasking with concurrent teaching, and this is emotionally and physically exhausting. Lastly, at Bel Air, social-emotional learning and support are a priority. With our students, we embrace zones of regulation, and with the implementation at home, our parents are keeping our students healthy and happy. Our school counselors have their guidance lessons, and on Mondays, they hold lunch bunches, small groups, individual counseling, and are available for any additional support. Our school social workers and school psychologists offer support to students and families by identifying community resources. With our staff, we have implemented monthly mental health and self-care calendars. We've had a visit from a traveling coffee shop. There's weekly tokens of appreciation, staff check-ins, and the sharing of the county's Employee Assistant Program comp site resources. Our community has also stood in the gap through the support and investment in student learning, from Grace Church of Virginia down in Dumfries, to Phi Capusita Chapter of Zeta, Phi Beta, Swardi Incorporated, Holy Family Church, and countless other organizations and donors. Blessed is the one who perseveres under trial. This pandemic is definitely a trial that we will all come through victoriously. When my staff is well, my students are well. So please acknowledge that we are all surviving a global pandemic. That is to be celebrated. I am ever so humbled to lead the learning and protect the heart of my staff, students, families, and Bel Air community. Thank you to Mr. Erickson and my family, the Central Elementary School Principals, for your leadership, unmatched wisdom, and support. Allow me to introduce one of my middle school colleagues, Dr. Mary Jane Boynton.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. It is my pleasure and honor tonight to have this opportunity to share Parkside Middle, a Cambridge International School's, experiences with supporting student learning during the school year of virtual, in-person, and hybrid instruction. Throughout this school, this unique school year, Parkside has maintained a robust PLC culture. We have continued meeting weekly by content and grade level throughout this school year. Our teachers work in collaborative learning teams to plan, problem-solve, and support one another. This protected time is used to brainstorm ideas and collaborate on how to differentiate activities and lessons. Most importantly, the teachers share ideas and suggestions on how to reach struggling students, both in the virtual and in-person setting. We analyze student academic progress, and we work to develop specific, targeted opportunities to support our students. This school year, our teachers have been reaching out to our students via breakout rooms, the chat feature, phone calls, and emails to problem-solve with them as well as their families. This is a systematic approach being facilitated throughout our school building. When necessary, our parent liaison, school counselors, and our multi-tiered support specialist has become part of the outreach to provide additional support to our students. Supports are offered, that we offer include after-school tutorial sessions, Tuesday through Friday, by individual teachers, to provide additional support to our virtual students. We have Monday office hours and additional opportunities for our virtual students to meet with our teachers. We provide targeted supports to students by inviting them to come in the building to receive one-on-one support. Our school counselors have been conducting lunch bunches and small groups virtually. Additionally, our school counseling department started the initiative of No One Eats Alone, which we have now adapted to include virtual and in-person students. Based on our current student data, we have identified in-person students who will be working with our site-based multi-tiered support specialist and school counselors to begin a four-week Tier II academic intervention and support program. This program is to assist with bridging any gaps in their learning, and with parental permission, they are temporarily being rotated out of encore classes. Some additional strategies we have found to support virtual and hybrid learning are to engage in-person and virtual students in... to engage in-person and virtual students in breakout rooms to help make connections with and between students. With the addition of in-person students, our teachers have identified technological problems that certain students were having at home, and now better understand why they were struggling and have been able to assist more virtual students. Little by little, more cameras are being turned on, so our zoomies and roomies can communicate with and connect with each other. And some of our teachers have begun to adopt new flipped classroom teaching methods to be able to focus on virtual learners, providing one-on-one help as needed. Thank you for providing me this opportunity to share Parkside's journey. It is important for me to mention how vital the collaboration has been with my middle-level colleagues. At the middle level, all principals have met weekly with Mr. Bigsby, and the teamwork, support, and guidance we have received has been outstanding. I'm extremely proud to work for Prince William County Schools and immensely honored to be the principal of Parkside. My teachers, staff, students, and community have risen above unprecedented challenges and have continued to keep what is important at the forefront, and that is our students. It is now my pleasure to introduce Mr. Brandon Bowles, Principal of Potomac High School.
Mr. Bowles, please unmute.
Sorry, my mistake. Good evening, Dr. Latif and School Board members. I think I see my School Board member, Mr. Wilk, there as well for the Potomac District. Good evening. I also want to say good evening to Dr. Waltz and the superintendent staff, who have been great Potomac High School supporters throughout this virtual learning journey. My name is Brandon Bowles. I'm the proud principal here at Potomac Senior High School, and I'd like to share with you just a little bit about Potomac High School's journey and COVID-19 response while we've been away from the building and now that we've returned to the building. We're proud to support 73% of our students via virtual learning right now. 27% of our students are in-person here in the building, either on Tuesdays and Thursdays or on Wednesdays and Fridays. 97% of our staff members have returned to the building as well, so we're glad about that. And recently, an additional 3% of our students have elected to return in-person for instruction for the fourth quarter, for April 6th and beyond. Our Potomac teachers and administrators continue to analyze student data during virtual learning to see areas of growth and areas of strength. What we've recognized is that we have several students who have had banner years or who are having banner years academically via virtual learning. The limited distractions, the more inclusive access to school resources and activities online have all been a benefit to our students. In marking period two, for instance, courses like Algebra II and Chemistry are seeing students perform as well, if not better, than they did last year, which is quite a testimony to our students and staff. That said, we've also noticed that we've had some students who struggle with the virtual learning. We're paying special attention to our ninth-grade students with the understanding that ninth-grade to 10th-grade matriculation is a really strong indicator of on-time graduation three years later. Given the student achievement data, we've offered several interventions and supports for student learning. I'd like to mention a few of those. Don't have time to mention them all, but I'll mention just a few. Here, over the past month and a half or so, we've implemented virtual learning remediation and recovery at Potomac. We've had teachers sign up to provide intervention and support to students in-person on Mondays and Saturdays, and we've serviced 80-plus students. Collaborative learning teams, so teacher teams, have determined essential understandings for quarter one and quarter two, and used in-person instruction, labs, feedback, and virtual platforms such as EdMentum, which has seen success over at Independence, and Desmos for math, just to name a few, to assess student learning. We've also budgeted for six sections to be offered in core and elective subjects to artificially reduce class sizes, so we're trying to do our best to make sure that students are receiving as much individualized support as possible. And we're also supporting students' mental health and social and emotional well-being through our school counseling department offering Mental Health Mondays, and also through our self-paced Potomac Advisory Modules, which is an in-house program that we have in place to make sure that our students have an opportunity, again, on a volunteer and self-paced basis, to walk through supports for social and emotional wellness and mental health. In addition to all of that, we have day-to-day practices that we implement that assist us with just making sure that each day's instruction is as valuable as possible. We're continuing with our school-wide implementation of professional learning communities or PLCs for instructional design and for lesson planning. Our teachers collaboratively focus on what we want students to know and be able to do, what evidence of mastery looks like, what support and interventions are offered when a student does not show mastery, and what support is offered when a student has shown mastery for extension. All that being said, none of the planning, interventions, or supports mentioned would be of any effect if it weren't for our Potomac High School staff. From our custodians to our counselors, to our teachers, administrators, classified support staff members, I couldn't be more proud. Our staff has pulled together, not pulled apart, during this pandemic. And I'm humbled and appreciative and grateful on behalf of our students and community for our fantastic staff. So that's just a little bit of what's going on to support our learners and to support our teachers during virtual learning and throughout this pandemic.
I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Jarson Hart, Associate Superintendent of Western Elementary Schools, to facilitate a School Board Principal Q and A with these outstanding leaders. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, to the School Board, and Dr. Waltz. Thank you for another opportunity to facilitate the voices of principals, our frontline leaders. We welcome your comments and questions at this time. Chairman Latif, at your pleasure.
All right. So let me ask just maybe a first question. And I know we got some Q and A answers and some sort of little bit of academic data, but I know our principal, Ms. McDonald, mentioned it, and it's not necessarily a specific question for Ms. McDonald, maybe an associate or Ms. McDonald can answer, but she read off some of the numbers for mastery in math and mastery in English. Where are we in those mastery levels across the elementary division, and we'll start with elementary first, relative to where we were last year? I mean, it's one thing to know what we're doing this year, but I have no idea how that compares to last year. And the number this year means little to me unless I know what happened last year. So do we have any data? And if you don't have it now, can the board get that data ASAP?
So we can absolutely get that data. One of my colleagues, Nathaniel Provencio, may have it readily available, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Provencio. And if he does not have it, you can rest assured we can provide it for you immediately.
Thank you, Jarson. Dr. Latif, yes, one of the things that we always tried to look at is contextual data. Now, obviously, last year at this time is a lot different from this year at this time. So we want to make sure that we're always comparing apples to apples, oranges to oranges, and that. But what we'll do is we'll continue to be able to provide math data. It's something that's very, very important to us. One of the things that we look at is, for elementary levels, formative assessment data throughout our units. We look at it by standard. We have concurrent data meetings with our school principals almost weekly on this data, refining our instruction, aligning our resources so that they can do the best that they can. But yes, last year was a different context than this year.
And I understand that, and some of the data you guys provided in the Q and A, which I do appreciate, showed improvement from the fall to now, right? And so if you have that data, that's also great, too. It wasn't, it was very sparse. There was no improvement data on math that was provided to the board. There was some improvement on PALS. Again, it was broken down by grade, but not by school. I think you guys did a nice job breaking it up by school in the fall. And I understand it's apples and oranges, but this might be a simpleton question, because I'm not, you know, I am a simpleton in some ways. But for me, and as I heard from each of your principals, we're going to fix the loss of learning, right? We're going to reconstitute that or revisit it and do this. How do you know what your loss of learning is if you aren't comparing it to last year? So what drives that? Because just the improvement from the fall to now, sure, there's improvement, but how do we know what the loss of learning is, which is what we're talking about, right? I'm using your own principal's words. How do we know what that is if we're not looking at last year?
Yeah. That's a very excellent question. I'll give you just a little bit of context that's relevant right now. At this point in our math instruction for our grades three, four, and five, we're starting to get into some units that we did not necessarily have the opportunity to get into. So fourth graders now were third graders last year. When the pandemic started, they lost some of this instructional opportunities because instruction was, we were just on survival mode, right? So we're having to circle back around at this point to make sure that we're spiraling back, to make sure that our fourth graders are getting the information that was maybe lost in third grade, same with fifth grade and fourth grade. So looking at the contextual data about what they didn't have an opportunity to really dig deep in, it's starting to come back now. Good news is we're getting more students back in. We're starting to have our tutoring programs. We're starting to have remediation results, remediation that's coming in, so we can try to make up. But it is the reality that there was some lost instruction last year, and we're doing everything we can to circle back. And as we're assessing students, we are seeing some deficits that we need to really double down on and try to prepare for.
And I really appreciate that, and I don't want anyone to take this any means that I'm picking on you particularly or elementary. I want the same answers for middle school, which I haven't seen any data. I want the same, I want to see what grades are happening at the high school level. It's not, you know, I mean, I appreciate the idea that some are doing better, some are doing worse, but some doesn't mean anything to me. I can tell you that before this meeting started, there was some members of the press who saw that we were having an update on academics, and they said, "Dr. Latif, what data are they referring to to give you in the update?" Because there's nothing attached here. And so I answer to the public, you know, fortunately or unfortunately. And so I have to have some kind of data, you know, as I look and as we, you know, and as you elegantly pointed out, you know, we are improving, and that's great. The loss of learning, and because we want to create a summer school, we want to do something, I hope we have a way to identify how we're losing that learning. So I appreciate this panel, and that's really, my questions are the same for the middle and the high school. I don't need an answer from them. But, you know, I know we had a question about, you know, how many F's students were getting, and that was higher in this. We haven't heard anything about that since, so I'd like some data on that. I'm going to go next to Ms., I'm done, so, and that's it. I'll go to Ms. Williams.
Excuse me, Chairman. Chairman Latif.
What's that, Ms. Hart? I'm sorry.
Would you like to hear any additional information about the data, or you're ready to move on to another topic?
If you have data, I think the board over here is looking at me like shaking their head, yes, we'd like to hear data.
Okay, so I believe that Dr. Casada can add to where we are regarding student achievement data. Dr. Casada, please.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, School Board members, Dr. Waltz, and everyone. We certainly can provide you, I heard everything you asked, Dr. Latif, and we can provide additional information. Just for quick things that I can say, you referenced, starting with elementary, you referenced the question about comparison to last year. I remember back, there was an update a while ago at mid-year point that did show and compare quarter one and quarter two this year and last year for K through two and three through five. The numbers are lower this year, but for example, in grades, overall at elementary school, 76% of students were at or above grade level in reading at the end of the second quarter, and this year it was 68%. At that point, it got closer than it was at first quarter. Also, for secondary school, for middle and high school, the percent of students getting Fs that we, at the end of the second quarter, was in a board update, and I can provide additional information in response to that with more detail at the school level as you requested. But the proportions, obviously, are a little higher this year, but what happened was the gap, the gap that existed in first quarter was there, and then the slopes of the lines, not to get too nerdy on you, the slopes of the lines from first quarter to second quarter didn't get any worse. So what we've seen in the past is from first quarter to second quarter, more students have traditionally ended up with Fs than, so more students, higher proportion, had Fs in two or more classes in second quarter than in first quarter. This year, that's the same. You're seeing similar trends. There were more as a starting point, right? But it seems like it's leveled some, and then we can look at that again, and I can, we can pull things, and we'll work with the Level Associate colleagues to provide you lots of information. Just a caution moving when we get to third quarter, because third quarter, so comparisons can happen to last year up until pretty much now, because if you recall, at the end, at this, we're at the point last year when things shut down, and then grading and everything kind of ceased in the traditional sense. And so there'd have to be some caveats for last year, but we'll certainly be looking at that as we end the third quarter. So the Level Associates and the Principals have information that they're looking at, and certainly, anything that is requested by the board can most obviously be provided.
Dr. Casada, thank you so much, and I'll go on to the next board member's questions. And you don't have to answer this now, but we have PALS at the elementary level. I know we've talked about that. Are there similar types of tests that we're looking at at the middle and high school level? And what are those if you are using them? You don't have to answer that now. You can provide that data to the board. I saw Ms. Williams was next up for a question.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. My question sort of piggyback on yours, so I just kind of want to start there while we're still on this. And I think it's good, because this perspective, first, let me back up. I want to thank all of the principals who came to speak on the panel tonight. Always nice to see my sor, always nice to see my frat. Wonderful to hear from you, doctor. I'm going to pronounce your name wrong. I'm sorry. Could you say it for me, please?
Just think of Boynton Beach.
Boynton, okay. I'm horrible. I just would rather ask than chop it up, but thank you. Because I think it's an important perspective, and it shows the differences between our schools, what services are being implemented. It gives the public a little bit more knowledge on the communication that principals have with each other, what they're doing internally. And I think it's also a great opportunity to publicly acknowledge the staff and everyone who helps run the building and make our student academic progress possible. So I do appreciate that greatly. Dr. Casada, in addition to what Dr. Latif was asking, I think that we'd also like to know, sort of as a board and for the public's knowledge, because we get asked these questions a lot, you know, how do we determine when a student, maybe, Dr. Casada, you might not be the right one for this one, but how do we determine when a student needs a support? What does that look like at each level, elementary, middle, and high school? What are those types of things that trigger that response? Is it like a bad report card? Is it a test? Is it, you know, student attitude? Because the average person, and sometimes even a parent, doesn't know that information. And I think the goal right now is for all of us to do our part to support our students. So I think that would be helpful as well. And then what are the supports that are implemented once we determine that a student needs additional support? And I know that that varies, right, at elementary, middle, and high school, but maybe some examples. Ms. McDonald was talking about Tier One, like what is the difference between a Tier One support and a Tier Two support, you know, so that we're knowledgeable as board members, but also parents, when they hear this terminology, they would have no clue. What is the difference between a Tier One or Tier Two support? What does that really look like? Also knowing that, recognizing that the growth where our students are now is not going to be the same as it were in a normal year, right? So sort of like we look at inflation, right? Could we look at the comparisons from this year to last year, acknowledging that there was a loss of learning? But I remember a chart that showed very similar growth, right, in reading for elementary. But I don't know that the public sort of can digest that, something that's very easily digestible. In my house, we say, I say, like, example, Four Dummies, right, like the book series, so that people can kind of understand. Yes, maybe there's a, students are reading, 64% of students are reading it on or above grade at level, but we would expect to see that because of so many months of school lost, but the growth pattern is maybe the same from this year to last year. Like, maybe students are growing at the same rate, even though they were already behind. I think those, that's the kind of data that we're really looking for to be able to determine. How are we doing? What are, are we really servicing our students academically? We know it's working, but how is it working? What does it look like? What could we be doing more? And I think this is important, too, because we are, we just were made aware that we're going to hopefully get additional funding. We're going to do a robust summer school program. When we think about those kinds of things, how should we be thinking about that as a board from a funding level? board from a funding level as well? What should we be thinking to dedicate our resources to? Because that's, in addition to the superintendent's responsibility, that's also something that the public has an expectation of board members. So, I think that's where, from my perspective, that's where a lot of these questions are generating from. And then, let's see, what are the, and I'm also interested to know, sorry, also, we talked, some of the Principals talked a little bit about students returning. If we could get some more data on how many students in addition have elected to come back fourth quarter, right? Because we'll have that information as well. I think some Principals know, but we don't know as a board. Has there been a significant amount of growth in students returning to a building for the fourth quarter now that they've had it, you know, students who are in, have had the opportunity to be in? Are we seeing a decline? What does that look like, too? So, I'm not sure who the best person to answer those questions, and we don't need them now. I don't need the answers now, but I think those are the more, in more depth, look at what we're asking for in addition to what's being presented tonight. Thank you.
So, Ms. Williams, I think your questions are spot on, and if you would give us the green light, we'd like to address at least the first two questions at each level. And so, I'd like to ask our Principals if they could prepare to answer these two questions. How do we know that our students are not learning? And what do we do to support them with filling these learning gaps? There will be some similarities and differences from elementary, middle, to high school, but we're going to start with elementary. So, we're going to ask Ms. McDonald if she would share with us, how do we know how our youngsters are doing when they're not meeting the targets or the standards? And then, what do we do as a result?
Thank you, Ms. Hart. So, in, at Bel Air, we do have an RTI, which is Response to Intervention Process. That's the formal, the formal language here that we usually use to identify students taking a look at just regular summative data, formative data, things like that. In this current reality, we take data like classroom behavior. Are students participating in their class? Are they, are their cameras on? Are they attending school? We look at assessment data, of course, student involvement and engagement, answering questions within class. We also look at, when we look at the assessment data, we take a look at where the kid was come March 2020, and then where we would expect them to be as they enter into that next grade level. And so, once we identify the gap that a student has demonstrated, we then tap into the resources of our Title I Math, Title I Reading teacher, our reading specialist, and they begin some intervention, some intervention type of supports. They pool students in small groups and breakout rooms where they focus on phonics-based skills that a lot of our K-2 kids didn't get the opportunity to strengthen from March to September. They also work in programs that have support lessons like Lexia, which is a phenomenal program that has really helped build our children, our students, phonemic awareness, their phonics, their literacy, their decoding. It is a phenomenal program. So, that program, that intervention that we put in place for our kids, they're on it every day, about 20 or so minutes a day, meeting those reading goals. In math, we work through programs like Dream Box, where the students are able to, on their particular level, be extended or be remediated at their own pace. So, we literally pinpoint those particular areas by just watching and plugging into our kids' academic and behavioral data.
Okay, so, thank you, Ms. McDonald. If I could add to what you're saying, we typically have PALS tutors to assist our students who have not passed the PALS screener. Again, the small groups for reading and math. We engage our reading resource teachers with small groups and co-teaching with our classroom teachers. And we also believe in co-teaching for our ESOL learners as well as our students with disabilities. So, those are just a few more strategies that we use once we determine that a youngster needs extra support in time with filling some learning gaps. Let's listen to Dr. Boynton regarding middle school support.
Thank you, Mrs. Hart. So, at the middle school level and at Parkside in particular, we are, we fully embrace the standard-based learning and standard-based assessment. And with that, we are constantly, on a daily basis, doing formative assessments. We're doing quick checks, we're checking in with our students. We are able to determine during the 90-minute class period whether a child is becoming close to mastery of the target that we are learning. Our teachers can then allow our students to go into our breakout room and do conferencing with the teacher, they can talk about what it is that they're missing. At the middle school level, a lot of times, it's lack of focus because we are dealing with tweens. So, there's a lot of distractions at the middle level. So, our gradebook is really our data at the middle level, and we truly live by our gradebook. Our gradebook is real data, it's authentic data, it tells us, has our children, have our children mastered the targets that we are working with them? We don't need to necessarily use any other data. Parkside is one of the schools piloting Mastery Connect that we will be hopefully using next year. We're using the assessment tools and quizzes that are available on Canvas. We also have been using NI-CU for a number of years, so we have a number of very targeted-driven assessments that we can provide as benchmarks that we can use to gauge how our students are learning. So, I think for the, for us, is very much that gradebook. At Parkside, we've been doing standard-based learning and grading for well over six years now. And so, we have something that we call PIPs, which are Panthers in Progress. So, if any of our students have missed one of the targets that's on a summative assessment, or the teachers feel that they need to just give it another try, then we call them our Panthers in Progress, and they get an opportunity, just as the regulation states, to be able to retake either a portion of the assessment or all of the assessment after they have gone through some reteaching and some remediation or some additional work for our teachers. So, there is, there's a number of things that we can do. Monday office hours have been phenomenal to invite children who maybe have been struggling with the quick checks, or the teachers have noticed that the formative assessments are not doing so well. And so, they can invite children, highly encourage children to come to these office hours where they are much smaller groups, the children are much more comfortable turning their cameras on, and they can have, even if it is virtual eye contact, they can have eye contact and really problem solve with the teachers. So, for us, it's really embracing standard-based learning and grading, using that gradebook as our driving force, and really using that opportunity to reteach and reassess our children as they are ready for that.
Thank you so much, Dr. Boynton. Your longevity with standard-based grading and learning and teaching gives us lots of validity, and we thank you for honing in on that, honing in on that particular component of student mastery. Last, let's listen to our principal from the high school, and his name is Mr. Bowles, and let's talk about what we do when our students, when we determine that students are not making adequate progress, and how we provide support to fill and close those gaps.
Well, first, I'd like to celebrate what Ms. McDonald and Dr. Boynton mentioned. All of that is spot on with some of the practices that we're replicating at Potomac High School. We're looking at formative data, we don't wait on tests, we don't wait on summative data towards the end of a unit. Instead, we look at formative assessments all the way throughout so that we can provide intervention as soon as we recognize the need for it. We're also taking a look at attendance data and checking out student engagement to make sure that we're using that as an indicator for student success, too. We know that students who don't attend or aren't engaged have less likelihood of doing well on formative or summative assessments, and similar to what Dr. Boynton mentioned, our central hub for all of this is really the gradebook. We're looking at specific and individual standards, we're identifying, because it can be the case that a student can, as opposed to just saying this student's doing poorly in this class, there can be areas where the student is actually doing well. And so, we want to separate the two, we want to identify the areas of strength, and then also identify the areas of weakness and really address that. I do want to make mention of three different things kind of beyond what Ms. McDonald and Dr. Boynton mentioned. First, I want to mention the collaboration piece that our teachers are doing a fantastic job of at Potomac. We're not relying on individual teachers identifying individual student needs alone. They're doing this in teacher teams. And so, not only are we able to identify when there are students who have deficits, we're able to identify when teams have deficits. In other words, sometimes it's the case that our teacher teams, as reflective practitioners, look and say, "Hey, look, we may not have spent enough time on this standard or on this target." And so, collaboratively, we need to work together to address that, because this wasn't one teacher here or there, this was our entire team where our students showed some deficits. And so, that's really the power of the PLC model that we're implementing, is that we're not looking at kind of individual trends, we're looking at departmental and subject-area trends as well, and able to address that as a team as well. You could see things like compacting, where students who are struggling would all kind of go to one teacher who's providing some individualized feedback and support, while students who need to be pushed forward are working with another teacher, and we can kind of break it up and go into groups in that way. We can use programs like iXL to make sure that we're giving prescriptive practice to students, they're not just practicing everything all over again from Unit Three, but specifically Targets Two, Five, and Seven are where the student needs support, and we can provide them with kind of a prescriptive list, and so, I'd like to make mention of that. I do know that at the high school level, and probably across the board, but certainly at the high school level, we really emphasize that grades are not static. It's not the case that, that, you know, once a student does struggle or does poorly on an assessment, that that's just in the books and it's written in stone. Instead, our teachers take it upon themselves to recognize that, to provide interventions and support, and to give the student per the regulation opportunities to retake and to be reassessed on specific areas of deficit. I'll mention this last thing, and then I'll be done. I will say, another strong suit of this virtual learning model that we've kind of dealt with some growing pains, but I think that there, it's productive pain, is that we are also finding new ways to assess student mastery. It was the case under traditional learning where, you know, we kind of assess students traditionally as well, multiple choice, paper and pencil, things like that. Under this virtual learning model, it's really provided us more flexibility than we've ever had instructionally to assess students through project-based learning models, or allowing students to report videos explaining, allowing students to create presentations to explain their mastery, and so, it's really opened the doorway to a whole new way of assessing student mastery in the first place. So, use of rubrics, really using those gradebooks in creative ways are things that we're all kind of exploring and getting better and better at, I think, division-wide, and I'd like to make mention of that, too.
Okay, thank you to the three Principals for sharing how they address students who are not meeting expectations and work even harder or differently to help them do that. We may want to mention that the Monday office hours are a time when we can extend instructional day for students, and then many of us have already started the before or after-school tutorials or remediation. And lastly, Mr. Bowles hit on this a little bit, we have youngsters that are knocking it out of the park, and so, it's important that we are providing enrichment and advancement for those youngsters as well.
Great.
Back to Dr. Latif.
Yeah, so I had Ms. Zargarpur and then Ms. Jessie. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So, I'd like to, I don't know if this can be a short answer, but we don't need a huge long thing about it. In elementary school, our teachers are generalists for the most part, so they know more about the continuum of, you know, content from K to one to two to three, so they can do something, it's called vertical articulation. What does that look like in middle and high school? And, short answers, please. But, so, for example, my daughter was in biology last year, and biology stopped on March, what, 15th or something, right? So, there was no new instruction after that, and she got whatever her grade was. Well, presuming she wants to take biology in college, I don't know if she knows all the things she needs to know and whether it's going to be more of a challenge or not. So, that's kind of one side concern, because that's a compartmentalized subject. But then you have subjects like foreign language or math that connect one year to the next to the next. So, I just, very quickly, can you speak to how those kinds of things may work?
Let's start with the high school this time, Mr. Bowles. How are you making connections vertically by content into grade level?
Sure, I hate to repeat, but I would go back to using those gradebooks and depending on the collaboration piece. It's important in the gradebook, it kind of, again, gives us, if a student did struggle in a course, or did do well in a course for that matter, it does tell us strengths and weaknesses for individual students. And so, we ask for our teacher teams to make sure that they're communicating vertically for students going from one grade to the next, or one class to the next, what student strengths are and what student weaknesses are, and then, of course, beyond the individual student strengths and weaknesses, we also look at, as a PLC or as a group, what are some strong suits that the group showed overall on assessments, and what are some things that we know need to be addressed as they move on to the next class? And so, our teacher teams work collaboratively to make sure that everybody's getting the very best possible as they move from one class to the next.
And Dr. Boynton, similarly, please.
Thank you. At Parkside, not only do we have our collaborative learning teams that are by departments, we also have monthly department meetings. And so, those are where we do our vertical alignment, where our three grade levels are talking about their pacing, again, going back to the gradebook. The gradebook is really the hub of everything. So, our teachers are able to show each other how their students are doing based on the learning targets, which are clearly identified in the gradebooks. So, it's that collaboration over these monthly meetings where they can talk about, my sixth grade teachers can share, "Well, we were working on integers, and we worked through this, but I think you're going to have to relook at it again next year because we had this percentage." So, it's these ongoing conversations where they are truly working together, and they can assist each other. I have seventh grade teachers that are masters at teaching a certain standard, and they're able to share with the sixth grade teachers, "Well, have you tried it this way? This has worked for us." So, it's that true level of alignment where we are making sure that there is that constant flow, both in math and language arts and our other content areas.
Can I ask a quick follow-up, then? Is there, do you feel like you're going to need any special extra time or training or materials or resources that we as a board need to be thinking about in terms of like budgeting for moving forward? I know we're already going to do a budget for now, but just, do you see a need for, and I guess CARES money could technically be used for that, too?
Buy more books.
Buy more books. Thank you, Mr. Wilk. But, yeah, is there anything that you, off the top of your head, think that we can do as a board to support you? Second thing is, I understand teachers have a very hard time with grades, getting things out of Canvas and into ParentView, that that's very time-consuming, and I'm really, really imploring whoever's job it is to look at this, to take that off their plates, get somehow make the computer talk to the other computer, whatever it is, so that they aren't spending all this extra time transferring grades constantly. That's it.
In Chairman Latif's absence...
I am so sorry. Yes, he walked out of here. If there's a response, that's fine, if not, we can think and move on.
I was going to ask Mr. Guilfoyle if he could speak to the technology integration between Canvas and ParentView, please.
Yes, good evening. Yeah, we actually have provided that update to the board last week, in the update, in the written update, but I'm happy to go over that. Essentially, the challenge that we face between Canvas and the hub integration is one that is simply, it's never existed, and it doesn't exist anywhere in the United States right now in terms of that gradebook integration between those two systems. And the challenge that we face is that right now, the hub is our system of record for grading, it's the permanent record, if you will, you know, that's as if you think of it in terms of, that is the student's permanent... student's permanent record. All their information regarding their data is there. And Canvas is really what we call our learning management system. That is something that the teachers use for their assignments and for tracking the students on their individual assignments, giving them feedback, individual assessments, as the principals have discussed this evening. So, that's not a permanent record. The challenge that we face is that the, those two systems, there's a lot of complexity when you start trying to have those things simply pass information back and forth. And there's a lot of room for error. And right now, neither vendor has a system in place that's a proven system, that's a reliable system. It's something that they're working towards. And again, no one in the United States has it right now between those two systems. And so, we don't feel that, for this year, that that's going to be feasible. There's simply too much room for error, especially as we enter into the last quarter of the year. We wouldn't want to introduce a system where the grades are going into their permanent record, if you will, and are wrong or create complexities, especially for transcripts as we're moving towards that season for universities. It is something that we're looking at. It is something we're working with the vendors on, and ideally down the road, we understand that, yeah, it would be great if you could just push one button and it goes through. Some of the other complexities that are involved is, our grades, our grading schemes are complex in Prince William County, and they vary by grade. They vary by level. We have some grades that use letters, some grades that use numbers. And when you start trying to talk about algorithms and having to ensure that, you know, you have an S, and S, and S, and S minus, how does the computer average those things out? So, we start to look at those things and the complexities involved. The other issue is that there's no comment pass-back, which we know that that's important, that we want to make sure that our teachers are giving that feedback in terms of those comments. And so, they would still have to go into the hub and enter those as well. I think it's important to remember that, for 25 years, we've had some sort of a student information system, where the teachers have had to keep their gradebook and then enter those grades. So, I understand this year, you know, in an ideal world, it'd be great to just have it be able to pass back and forth. But this is not necessarily different from past years, except that they've had to learn Canvas extremely rapidly under duress. I don't think anybody would have, in an ideal world, said, let's roll out Canvas in two months. But we did it. And so, we're going to continue to work on this, and we know that that's a challenge. And it's something that's on our radar, but we just feel like it's not really, we don't want to create more problems as we move into the last quarter of the year.
Okay, great. Well, let me, because we've really got to move a little bit. So, Ms. Jessie's next.
I want to make a couple of comments. I'm not sure I have a lot of questions. First of all, congratulations to Mrs. McDonald. I had the opportunity to work with her. And what she won't tell you tonight is that she is part of a national video on data, use of data, and drive-in instruction. So, congratulations to you. Mr. Bowles, and you've mentioned the PLC model, and I noticed that you talked about the four critical questions, which are, are children learning? How do we know? What are we going to do about the ones that have not? What are we going to do about the ones that already learned? Are you trained in the four model, or the PLC model? Or are there just elements of it? You know, I just wanted to know where you are on that.
Thank you for asking, Ms. Jessie. Yes, I am. And we actually have a committee, a guiding coalition here at the school.
Wow.
We were planning on getting PLC training through SolutionTree last summer, but we've had some things change quickly right around this time last year. And so, this year, we're going to have our guiding coalition train. And everybody already has copies of Learning by Doing. And we're kind of reflecting and circling back to that regularly and talking more and more about kind of how we can make sure that it's not a luck of the draw for students as to whether they get a high-quality instructional experience or not. We don't want it to be just a roll of the dice as to whether you get the very best teaching and learning experience. We want to make sure that it's equitable. We want to make sure that we're leveraging the collective genius in our teacher teams, and using that collective genius to make sure that every student has an equitable experience, and that our students who get a B in Algebra I in Mr. Bowles' class are comparable to the students who get a B in Ms. McDonald's Algebra I class. So, things that we're working towards, we're certainly not a finished product at Potomac, but that's the direction that we're going.
Well, thank you very much. I also wanted to, I sort of, when I read this, I thought that we were going to get more academic information. So, I just want to clarify a couple of things, some things that I think are important for the board to follow up on. One is the AF students, the students that we talked about that are, who were A students and suddenly became F students. I think Dr. Latif talked about that, and we talked, I think, at some point, we're really going to need a report on that. When you disaggregate the data, I'm interested in knowing the learning of virtual kids versus those who are in-school learning. Is there a difference in that? Disaggregation of African-American versus Hispanic, reading versus math. And also, I have a question. I was in a school yesterday, because I'm, you know, I'm free now. I'm out. I'm away from virtual. I'm out of my Zoom room. And being at that school yesterday, I heard the principal say, well, good luck on your SOLs. Can you guys tell me where are we? Maybe Dr. Waltz or someone else, or someone else could answer this question. Are kids taking SOLs? And I heard, and I also heard that some students who are virtual may take a different format versus those that are in-school, and how does that monitor? Can you just give me an update on where we are with the SOL testing?
Thank you. Dr. Casada, would you please update the board regarding the status of learning assessment?
Sure. Mrs. Jessie, I'll give you a real quick Reader's Digest right now, and we can provide some additional information, along with what's, just to let you know what's gone to, you know, families and schools. So, the federal and state governments are requiring standardized assessments. And in Virginia, those assessments are the standards of learning assessments. And so, those assessments have to be administered in person, and the expectation is that students take those. However, there's the understanding from the state that there may be students, because they're virtual, whose parents aren't going to have them come in and take the test because of COVID, and that's completely understandable. And there's no penalty for the student on that. There's technical ways, what they call it and what that means. But students and schools, by the way, are not penalized for that. At the high school level, there's some options for students to defer taking exams to the following year, because high school students need to earn verified credits for graduation. So, there can be more detail on this. And the state keeps evolving. And when you just mentioned, Mrs. Jessie, about students who are virtual taking a different form of a test, the state literally just started developing these remote assessments that can be used to gauge student progress, but they won't be part of any type of accountability system because they're parallel to and similar to the SOLs, but not exactly the same. But they are not even yet built. They're literally getting done right now. So, we were planning to provide, as we got a little bit more on what those look like, to provide you with more information. We can certainly do that. But that's where it stands. And I want to commend our schools, particularly our high schools, who've already had students testing because the SOL writing window is occurring as we speak. And our schools have done Herculean things to provide opportunities for the students in the building. And remember, high school students, for the most part, haven't been there very long, as well as working collaboratively with offices like Transportation for students who are virtual but come and take those assessments perhaps on a Monday. So, that's what's happening right now. And as it's gearing up for the larger scale, we'll provide additional information. I hope that's the quick version.
Okay. The opt-out, how, do you have a number of students that have opt-out? And what's the date for the tests?
Okay. So, there are many, many different dates for the tests. The state has been very good at providing extended windows, and we've taken full advantage of extending windows to provide lots and lots of opportunities in school set schedules. In SOLs, schools can set multiple dates for individual tests. There's not a set date for any one exam. In terms of what the state calls refusals, that's the terminology they use, or people have their students not test, that's still coming in. And so, that's not something I have that I can speak to at this moment. But that's because the bulk of the testing hasn't occurred yet. There's the writing testing that's going on at high school, and there were some small numbers of tests for students that were based on last year, students who needed tests in what they call a fall administration. But the bulk of the assessment for SOL is happening later in the school year, and we will collect and provide that information. But those decisions, for the most part, have not yet been made and confirmed. But that's conversations that are ongoing, and that information, once it's, once we have it, can be provided.
I want to thank the principals for sharing with us. So, Dr. Waltz and the staff, I would like to see, we've had everybody in this room but teachers. And I don't know if you're going to do a town hall with teachers, but I would like to have some teachers talk about what they're seeing in their classrooms. Because, you know, I've been a principal before, and I know what I say. I say, everything is wonderful in my school. And, you know, that's what we do. But at the same time, and, you know, it's this top-down, bottom-up kind of thing that we have to have going, I'd like to see some teachers involved. And I would like for them to talk about their challenges and solutions. I'd like for them to address the question of, where do we go from here? I'd like for them to address the question of, what do we do differently? What have we learned? And what will we do differently? I don't know when we can provide that, but I would like to see some teachers in this boardroom, because there, I've just, you know, my experience and many experiences of people on this board, they are such professionals. And at the end of the day, they're the people who do the work. So, I'd like to see some teachers in the boardroom, if it's possible, down the road. And then, finally, I asked to have the Equity Report Card data presented at some point. So, I'd like to see that also presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. My question is, I guess I'll begin with a comment. I agree with my colleagues who have asked for or would request more specific data from all grade levels to show the extent of learning loss, if any, so we can assess the extent of what we will need to do to help all of our students coming, going forward. This is going to be a very important decision, starting, you know, remediation starts now. I mean, it started yesterday. It's been going on the whole year. But we have the summer. We have into the next fall. So, if we could get data to get an assessment of where we are, and I appreciate, Dr. Boynton, what you were saying about, you know, the importance of the gradebook. And I would be interested, not, also what Ms. Jessie said, you know, the As to Fs, I would think that would be a very important number. But I also think that it would be very important to look at As to Bs, Bs to Cs, Cs to Ds, and Ds to Fs. Because I think that we, if we look at that, we might see that we could see some trends. You know, students who were A students, and maybe now they're not, you know, maybe they're B students, you know, just, et cetera. I would like to know that. If I think that there isn't a problem, then, then great. I mean, well, if the data shows that we're doing okay, then great. But if the data shows us where we need to hone in on tailoring our remediation to actually help every kid, not just some kids, but I think every student is going to experience, at least, my suspicion is, every student is going to experience some remediation, or some loss of learning this year, your high flyers and, you know, kids that need extra support. So, I reiterate and support my colleagues in requesting more specific data that's disaggregated for virtual and in-person, perhaps specific subgroups of students, like Ms. Jessie was saying, and my colleagues as well. I really support that. And to the question of, you know, the data that we have this year, obviously, it's going to be apples to oranges, right? And last year, we stopped at March 13th. But maybe we could compare our data this year, knowing that it's really different, with historical data. Like, generally speaking, where are middle school students at this time of year historically? Not that, I mean, obviously, it's going to be different because we're in a pandemic, and we all know that. But that might help us understand the bigger picture, like what we're up against, and make a difference for our children so that they don't have years and years of learning loss, as sometimes data shows from historic events like Katrina and things like that. You know, sometimes, you know, kids never really recover. The data says that a lot of times, kids never really recover. So, I just don't want that to be the case for our kids. So, I guess that's not really a question, but that would be a comment, if we can start looking at that data, disaggregate the data, and really see what that data is going to tell us as we move forward, so that we can be really effective. I don't know if anybody wants to comment on that, but thank you for listening to what I had to say. And thank you very much, principals, for being here. I really appreciate your taking the time to come and talk with us and share your insights and what's going on in your schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Wall. We'll be certain to collaborate with the Level Associates and the Office of Student Learning to get some more specificity regarding the student achievement data.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. And Ms. Ralston, did you have anything to add? Okay. Okay, great.
No, I was going to, I was saying no. But I've heard a lot of good things, okay? Lots of good things, and how our students are working after all the time that they've had off. So, I think that we are going to be okay. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. We asked a lot of questions, and I know that we really appreciate the time. Dr. Waltz, back to you.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Latif. Thank you to our panelists and to Ms. Hart, Ms. Ravencio. And that concludes our academic update.
Outstanding. Okay, next, we'll go to, I think I'm at 1501, the annual comprehensive, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR, which comes from the external auditors. And I think that's Mr. Wallingford, correct? Or Dr. Waltz, who, I don't remember. Great.
Should I begin?
Sure. Go for it, Mr. Wallingford. This is my favorite part of the year.
Dr. Latif, members of the board, and Dr. Waltz. Tonight, before we get started, I'd like to briefly recognize a couple of folks who made this work possible. Kathleen Addison, our Acting Director of Finance, Renee Passon, our Supervisor of Accounting Services, and the rest of the staff in the Office of Finance have worked incredibly hard this year. And I'd just like to thank those folks for the work they do. And I mentioned to Lisa Thorne, we're anxiously awaiting your return. So, tonight, I'd like to introduce our external auditors. A gentleman named Mr. Greg Miller, he's a director with Cherry Becker and Holland, our external auditors. He and his colleague Laura Beckler, a manager for the firm, will be making this presentation this evening. Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. To the board, appreciate the opportunity to present the results of our audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. You should have the slide deck, which is being presented, and we'll go through that. Next slide, please. So, our next slide, it covers the engagement services. Before we get too far in the details, I did want to let the board know that we did present, in detail, a lot more detail we're talking here, to the Joint Audit Committee back in January. That included board members as well to go through the total contract with Prince William County. That includes the audit for Prince William County Public Schools. But that contract includes a financial statement audit, as well as compliance aspects, also some other deliverables, including examinations and agreed-upon procedures. From a financial audit perspective, those audits include not just the overall county, but also includes Prince William County schools. Under a separate contract, we also audit the Prince William County Student Activity Funds. And then, within the school's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, there's a discreetly presenting component unit, which is the Prince William County Public Schools Foundation. That's included within the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, but it is not audited by Cherry Becker. That audit, that entity is audited by other auditors. And we make reference to their opinion within our opinion on the overall financial statements included in your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. From a compliance perspective, our audit has to be performed not only under the generally accepted auditing standards accepted in the United States, but also an additional layer of auditing standards, there's the governmental auditing standards issued by the control in the United States. So, that is a layer of review on internal controls and compliance with items that might have a material impact to the financial statements. With the nature of federal funding, we also have to perform audit procedures over the expenditure of federal awards and then corners with Title II of the Code of Federal Registrations, that's the Uniform Guidance. And then also, as being a board within the Commonwealth of Virginia, we have to follow certain audit specifications. we have to follow certain audit specifications as outlined by the Auditor of Public Accounts. Some of those specifications include additional deliverables, one of which is an examination. And that examination is testing the census data that's provided by the schools to the Virginia Retirement System. That census data then goes into the actuarial analysis on determining the amount of pension and OPEB liabilities that the school board then records on the face of their financial statements within the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So we have to perform testing over that data. And then lastly, as part of the school's disbursement process, the school cuts checks on behalf of the county. So the county has asked for unagreed-upon procedures on that memorandum of, of understanding. And we do those agreed-upon procedures, the procedures that are agreed upon between the county and the schools as a separate deliverable. Next slide, please. So within our audit service deliverables, there's a couple of reports within the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I don't know if Mr. Wallingford had a copy of that report for you, but it's a fairly thick document. And it does take a significant amount of time for school staff to compile that information and then get it to us to, to review and test. So I do want to appreciate, or simply just acknowledge what Mr. Wallingford was saying and, and thanks to that whole team. We did have to transition everything from a typical onsite testing environment to where everything was done remotely. So that required some items that may not historically have been in electronic format being converted to an electronic format in order for us to complete the audit. So from a financial audit standpoint, within that Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, there's multiple sections. There's an introductory section, financial section. And within the financial section, there's required supplementary information as well as other supplementary information. And our audit is designed to provide different levels of assurance depending on those sections. So the first report, our auditor's report, is a, a full opinion, is what you think of when you think of an audit. And that covers the basic audit, or the basic financial statements, as well as the notes to the basic financial statements. And we designed our tests in order to provide sufficient audit evidence to base our opinion off of. And as of, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020, we had a clean opinion. Or it's an unmodified, which is a clean opinion, is what the type of opinion you're looking for. Also, within the financial section is supplementary information. Our audit procedures are not quite as intense on that information. But the information that's used to make that, to develop that information and supplementary information has been subjected to our audit procedures. So based upon the, the scope of this testing that was performed from that data, we can provide an in relation to opinion. So we have a clean opinion that the information contained within the supplementary information section is in agreeance with the financial statements in all material respects. And then the last section, which is, includes the introductory section as well as the required supplementary information in the statistical section. Because our audit does not involve performing testing over that, those sections, our opinion does not provide any assurance and we don't have an opinion on that information. Again, as I mentioned, the Education Foundation or Spark for Prince William Schools was audited by other auditors. So our report does reference those auditors for their opinion on those set of financial statements. As I mentioned, there's an examination on the census data provided to the Virginia Retirement System. And we had a unmodified or a clean opinion on the accuracy and completeness of that information provided to the Virginia Retirement System. And then lastly, we also completed the, it says in process on here. So Project updated this from when we changed board dates from, from the previous month. But we have issued our agreed-upon procedures over the MOU for the dispersments, dispersion of cash for the, for the schools. Next slide. From a compliance standpoint, as I mentioned, we have to perform our audit under government auditing standards. The government auditing standards requires us to assess internal controls of, over financial reporting for any particular entity, but not for the purposes of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of those internal controls. The purpose of assessing those is to help us design audit procedures that are appropriate in the circumstances. And then also, we look at compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grants that could have a direct and material impact on developing the amounts and disclosures included within the financial statements. So as a result of those procedures, we identify, we did not identify any material weaknesses in internal controls. And there was no reportable instances of noncompliance that would be required from a GAS perspective. I also mentioned that we have to perform a few additional procedures that are specifications issued by the Auditor of Public Accounts. Those are particular, certain provisions of laws and regulations specific to Virginia. So as a result of that testing, we did identify certain issues from a conflict of interest filing form perspective. So we did have a reportable instance of noncompliance as it relates to the conflict of interest. And then lastly, from a, a single audit perspective, or the audit of the expenditure of federal awards, again, we have to evaluate internal controls over compliance for the purpose of reporting on, on compliance. But again, not for the effectiveness of internal controls. And then we also have to examine evidence in order to support that the compliance requirements were met. However, since we are CPAs and we are not attorneys, it is not a legal opinion that there is no noncompliance. But as a result of our testing, we are anticipating no reported material weaknesses or noncompliance related to the school programs. And I say that's anticipated because that one has not fully finished yet. The single audit is done in connection with the county's single audit testing. So we're still working through on the county side of some of those items. Next slide, please. So these next couple of slides are required communications. As I mentioned, we went through these in fairly well detail with the Joint Audit Committee. But Laura is going to walk through the rest of these communications with me tonight.
Thanks, Greg, and good evening. So these are, as Greg mentioned, the required communications that we are required to communicate to those charged with governance at the conclusion of our audit. So this year, the school board did not adopt any new accounting policies during the year. Due to COVID, there was a GASP statement that was issued that delayed the implementation of several new accounting standards, delayed it a year, which we'll go over those that will be effective for the upcoming years at the end of this slide. There are estimates within some of the financial statement light items. Those amounts don't necessarily tie directly to an invoice or a cash receipt or a check. We do review those estimates and compare to historical trends or industry norms. And then we do test the reasonableness of these estimates. Some of these estimates do include the allowance for doubtful accounts, which is based on management's estimate of the collection based on historical trends for those customers. And then also pension and OPEB liabilities. Those are calculations that are completed by actuaries who are professionals in that field. And we do not compute those calculations. However, we do compare the assumptions that they're using to compute those liabilities and compare it to industry norms. And then we also test underlying source documentation. Also, capital asset useful lives are an estimate, which is management's estimate of how long the capital asset is expected to last. Pollution remediation liabilities are also on the financial statements. And that's an estimate of how, or what the cost will be to close those out. And then risk management claim liabilities and compensated absences are also estimates included in the financial statements. And those are also based on historical trends. We are required to report and compile any adjustments that are made during the audit as a result of our procedures. And we're pleased to report that this year, there were no such adjustments that came about through our audit procedures. There are, there were no disagreements with management that arose during the course of our audit, nor were there any difficulties encountered in performing the audit this year. As Greg mentioned, we just want to recognize the finance team, Renee and Taff specifically, for all the hard work that they put in to audit this past year. We can't audit what we don't have, so we really do appreciate their cooperation in providing things timely and, and completely as well. In some cases, management may consult with other accountants on auditing or accounting matters, similar to obtaining a second opinion on certain situations. And we're required to report our knowledge of any instances. And to our knowledge, we are not aware of any consultations that occurred during the year with other accountants. We have requested and obtained a representation from management that was signed as of the report date, January 25, 2021, which that is management taking responsibility of the financial statements and providing that what they gave us for performing our audit was complete and accurate to their knowledge. We, Greg and I and Cherry Becker as a firm, are independent to the school board in appearance and in fact, which helps put weight behind our opinion. If we weren't independent, then it wouldn't mean as much when we issue our opinion. And then lastly, as I mentioned, GASP Statement 95 was issued in 2020, which postponed the effective date a year or more due to COVID, just giving entities a longer time to implement certain accounting changes. So the two accounting change, or the two accounting standards that will be, have the largest effect on the school board is GASP 84, which deals with fiduciary activities. And that will be effective for the current year, fiscal year 2021. And this implementation will change the layout of where certain activity is reported within the financial statements. The biggest consideration for the school board is going to be around the Student Activity Funds and where they're reported currently. They're reported as an agency fund. But going forward, after the implementation of this standard, they're going to be reported as a governmental fund and they're going to be on the accrual basis. Additionally, GASP 87, which deals with leases, I think we've talked about this for a couple of years now. It will be effective for fiscal year 2022. And currently, we report leases as capital or operating. However, going forward, when the standard is implemented, it will effectively eliminate the operating leases and therefore be, therefore will be a right-of-use asset and liability on the financial statements for all leases. We want to thank you for your time this evening and open it up to any questions that you may have. On the next slide is our contact information. So feel free to contact us via email if you have any further questions after tonight.
Any questions? Ms. Jessie.
I'm not sure what my question is. Because, you know, I, I just got this huge book. And, you know, one of my concerns as a board, to be honest with you, is that you get this information. I, I do read the materials when I get them. So for me, I, I would just like to have the information earlier so that I can read and ask questions that are related to the information. The one question I do have, and I hope it's an intelligent question, and I know Mr. Wallingford will be kind to me and say that it's an okay question, Lily. Am I in slide, I think it's the second slide, where you talk about your financial audits? And you say that, is this report a report of your services? Or is this report a report of your results? That's the first question. And if you're looking at, in that green area, you're looking at the activity funds, are you auditing only activity funds? And it's probably somewhere in this book that answers that question. Are we looking at school activity funds? Or are we looking at other type of, of funds in the county?
So, Mrs. Jessie, that's.
Sure, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
All right. Slide two, the intent of slide two is, is to outline what we were engaged to do. So those, that's the scope of our services that are being provided to Prince William Schools. On slide three is the results of those services. And the results are also included in that big document that, that you had in your hands. In regard to the Student Activity Funds, that is an engagement that was procured separately. That one is procured by the school board. We happen to also do that work as well. That is a separate document set of financial statements that are issued separately of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. But the amount in there, in that Student Activity Fund financial statements are also included as an agency fund within the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
So in terms of your audit of activity funds at all the school levels, what were your findings?
So we, we had a, I don't have all that information really available in front of me. We did issue a report that had some best practice recommendations for management in regards to the Student Activity Funds. But the, the scope of, of this service was, or this communication was on the Comprehensive Financial Report, but I can't get you that information.
Yeah, I, I just know that with all those schools, that activity funds are something that you really have to be very careful about. And that there are generally some findings. I was on that audit committee for a while and I know that there were some findings there. So when you, in this slide, I'm looking at this slide and the thing that hit me, it says, "Our opinion on a 220 financial statement is unmodified or a clean opinion dated January 25, 2021." So excuse my naivety, but what does it mean, what does that mean, unmodified or a clean opinion?
Sure, so the professional terminology in, in the audit world is unmodified. And that means our opinion is clean, if you will. So that's what you're looking for. If we were to have issues, we could have a modified opinion, which would mean that your financial statements are in all material respect and compliance with generally accepted accounting principles, except for the pieces that we don't think they are. And we would spell that out in our report. You could also have an adverse opinion or a disclaimer of opinion. So adverse is saying, nope, it's all wrong. And disclaimer is saying, there's not enough evidence for us to even reach a conclusion on what our opinion should be. So unmodified is the professional term for the type of report that you're looking for on your financial statements.
Thank you very much. And I, I really would have liked to have had this report a little bit earlier because I could have read this and asked, I hope I asked intelligent questions, but thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. So I'm sure it's pretty well-known, I'm very slow at digesting financial information. I say that all the time, moments like these, I miss Mr. Trento. So in addition to what Ms. Jessie asked for, for look, report on student funds, one thing I don't think we talk about much is a Spark report. And I noted that you don't audit Spark. So maybe, Mr. Wallingford, if you could refresh at least my memory on what our involvement is in, as far as the School Division Board, where the clear lines are for Spark and, and how that impacts us? And if we should or should not be looking at those audit reports as well?
So, thank you, Mrs. Willam, Milton Williams, excuse me. Spark is technically a separate entity that have their own financial operation and they have their own audits done every year. Mr. Miller gets that information. He incorporates it into their audit work and it's incorporated into the CAFR, the Annual Financial Statements that you've received that we issue. They have a couple of employees who actually sit on the third floor, sit in this facility, and they provide support and, in some cases, funding to support the School Division.
So, go ahead, Ms. Williams.
I was just going to say, do we, do we look at those, do we have a copy of those reports? Can we look at those to see if, if they're sharing space? I would imagine that there would be some overlap in some kind of way. That I am not 100% knowledgeable because I don't live in the finance world. But maybe it, it could be explained to us how that impacts us at a later date. I'm sure we don't need to have a detailed discussion right now. But what that, how that impacts us as a School Division and things of that nature.
So that's, that's information that we can certainly provide. And what I would say is that we do receive their financial statements from their auditors and incorporate it into this. So although you don't have that information in front of you right now, it's something that we do get.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So, you know, Ms. Williams brings up a good point. And I think Greg and, or Laura, I think we talked about this in the Joint Audit Committee. And I, I can't remember if we did or we did it offline or in the committee. But GASP 85, the one we, the. or we did it offline or in the committee, but Gatsby 85, the one we, we delayed because of the pandemic, I think it's 85, talks about the student funds. But my concern was, or question was, are we gonna have to treat Spark Foundation differently with the new Gatsby?
No, so we did talk about this a little bit in the joint audit committee, and that was a virtual setting as well. So Gatsby 84, which has to do with fiduciary activities, will not, or should not have a significant impact on how Spark is treated. So Spark is a component unit, and it's not, I don't believe it would meet the definition of a fiduciary activity. Student activity funds also would possibly not meet that definition. So because of that, it currently sits as a fiduciary fund within the comprehensive annual financial report, and with the implementation of Gatsby 84, that will move into the governmental funds and be reported there. So essentially, it's just, it's a geography move within the set of the financial statements. It's not much of a change from what they're accounting for, or necessarily how the numbers are being reported, it's just moving what type of fund it lives in within the overall financial statements. So I hope that addresses your question.
Yeah, no, I think that does, and then I don't see any other questions here on the CAFR. First of all, and Ms. Jesse, good point, just so you know, Cherry Becker is engaged with us in a year-long process regularly, and so this is the report, we have to provide it to the board regularly, once a year, but you may feel free to look through it now, and they have their numbers and phone numbers there. You are entirely empowered to give them a call and ask them any questions at any time regarding the report. So this is the presentation of the report, certainly for anyone to look at. I want to thank Cherry Becker.
Dr. Latif.
Yes, Ms. Williams.
I stand by my earlier comment, that when we come to a board meeting, and there's a report, and there is a full report booklet, I think, for me personally, as a board member, I'd like to have it beforehand, because I think I really could have asked some more questions.
Understood, and just so you know.
And I was on the audit committee earlier, and I know that they make this report, but the slides, the slides were more of a summary, so I'm just asking for.
No, I 100% agree with you, and we'd like to get that information. I'm not saying we won't do that, but what I want to tell you is that you're always entitled to go through it. We could bring Cherry Becker back for another presentation if there are further questions at any time. That is the engagement in the service slide that you saw, and I haven't seen this level of enthusiasm for the external audit in a long time. And so Greg and Laura, we thank you. I think it's important for the community to recognize that Cherry Becker has been with us, working with both the county government and with us, and they provide the external reviews of frankly, Dr. Walts's award-winning finance department that continues to win awards, and we don't win those awards unless we get these clean opinions that are consistent, regular, and at least the four years I've overseen this have no significant material weaknesses. So we continue to appreciate the hard work of our finance team, Dr. Walts, and thank you all for the hard work you do to help us provide to the public the important data they need to know, that we are handling their money responsibly. Dr. Walts, you have anything to add?
No, thank you, but I appreciate the report, and I'm, again, impressed with how our financial team manages all of our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts, wonderful. Mr. Wallingford, I think, or Dr. Walts, I think we now move to the next item on the agenda, which is the fiscal year 2022 budget CIP approval.
Yes, thank you, and I'll turn it over to actually the chair to call for a vote, please.
Right. So at this point, we have, you know, done a number of work sessions, I think members have gotten their questions answered. At this point, I would like to call for a vote on the fiscal year 2022 budget, unless there's any further questions or concerns that we might have here at this point. As seeing no.
I have to read a conflict of interest statement.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Wilk has to read a conflict of interest statement.
Yes, sorry.
Please, Mr. Wilk.
Yes.
Potomac member.
Thank you, Chairman Latif, as I do every year. Pursuant to Virginia's Conflict of Interest Act, I'm informing the public that my wife is employed as a teacher in Prince William County schools, but I am able to participate fairly in this transaction, which applies to all Prince William County school employees. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd ask the board to, oh, we need, someone needs to offer the motion. Ms. Zargarpur, yes, please, let's do that first.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that the Prince William County School Board, one, approve the fiscal year 2022 CIP and the fiscal year 2022 school budget in the total amount of $1,660,253,712. And further, two, approve, approve the revenue sharing agreement between the school board, Prince William County School, pardon me, the Prince William Board of County Supervisors and the Prince William County School Board, that provides 57.23% of general county revenues to be transferred to the school division for the operations of fiscal year 2022. And further, three, direct the superintendent to forward the requested school budget by fund totals to the Prince William Board of County Supervisors. And further, four, request the Prince William Board of County Supervisors to approve and appropriate the fiscal year 2022 school budget by lump sum appropriation in the amount of $1,660,253,712 by fund totals as in previous years.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to second, thank Ms. Zargarpur for reading that, because I hated it last year.
Yes, Ms. Williams seconds the motion. At this point, I should ask for any discussion. As seeing no hands up for a discussion, at this point, I will call for the vote. Please put the vote up, Ms. Simpson. And Ms. Ralston, how do you vote on this year's fiscal 2022 budget?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous.
The motion is eight yes unanimous, unanimous passage of the fiscal 2022 budget and CIP. Thank you to our finance staff. Dr. Walts, congratulations on another incredible effort, and I just think a budget loaded with really important and exciting things that will help us continue to move this school division forward. What we'd like to do is, at this point, Mr. Wallingford, if you want to, or Dr. Walts wants to present the fiscal 2021 year-end spending approval, and then we'd like to take a break for about 10 minutes.
Mr. Wallingford.
Mr. Wallingford.
Dr. Latif, members of the board, and Dr. Walts. I have no presentation this evening on this topic, just a few brief remarks. Our forecast for available year-end spending totals $23,600,000. $23,600,000. I want to provide a little context on that number. It sounds like a very large number, but there are two, three things I'd like to share. The first is, in prior years, we've seen numbers at year-end like this. This is our forecast for what we expect at year-end, forecast made as of the end of December. In prior years, we've seen that number from as small as eight or nine million dollars to as much as $34 million. The $34 million number was a function of the Great Recession, the years 2007, eight, nine, and the division's plan on actually saving money over time so that we could come out of the recession from a financial perspective on kind of an easy landing as opposed to a crash landing. This number's large, it's not as large, it's a third less than the largest we've experienced in the past even 10 years. The other thing I'd share with you is that one of the reasons the number is as large as it is, is because when we came back to school, we experienced an enrollment loss, or a reduction enrollment from the forecast of about 27, 2800 students. One would expect that that would cost us a substantial amount of money from the state, and what happened was, the state held us harmless in that enrollment loss. The problem with that enrollment loss funding, that no-loss funding, was that we were uncertain of that until just a month ago. And so what we, what we didn't do is we didn't plow that money back into the schools, which we could have done in August or September, had we known. So we find ourselves with a pretty substantial amount of money that will be available to us at the end of the year. The one thing that staff would recommend at this point is that we, like we have in many years prior, added $333,333 to the sinking fund for our 800-megahertz system that we will have to replace in several years. Okay, Mr. Crowe and his team will put in extraordinarily expensive devices on our buses and in the hands of security folks, and we're moving, we're approaching the point where we'll have enough money to do that. Staff also would recommend that the balance of that $23 million be reserved until the middle of April, when we have a better understanding of what's gonna happen with tax rates and what our revenue picture actually will be coming from the county. Thank you.
Any questions? At this point, a motion's in order, I forgot to ask that at the beginning. Ms. Zargarpur? This item's on for action, it is 1503.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the fiscal year 2019 year-end.
2021.
Oh, it says 2019 here, sorry. 2021 year-end spending per the detachment.
Any, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I have a second.
Any discussion, further discussion, questions, concerns, thoughts? I think somebody, Mr. Stevens, somebody's on, oh, well, okay, that's great. So at this point, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Okay, wonderful. So thank you for that, folks, thank you again. We will take a break and return at 9:50, 9:50. Thank you. Okay, could everyone please return to their seats, and we will move on to 16, right? 1601, we have the student representative, Caroline Silveira, one of our student representatives, joining us this evening here, live and in person, from Hilton High School. Ms. Caroline.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so I'd first like to start by seconding Ms. Jesse's request to the superintendent and his staff for including teachers in a panel. I know that I'm not a voting member of the board, but I spend every day in a virtual classroom with my teachers, and I've seen their struggles, their accomplishments with online learning, so I think it's really important that we do put teachers at the forefront and include them in the conversation. All right. So it is a very busy time of the year. As we get closer to the end of the school year, students become increasingly concerned about things such as graduation, prom, AP exams, and finals. I'm going to address all of these concerns, but first I'd like to begin with some good news. So my friend and fellow student senator, Cyrell Greer, from Garfield High School, he recently was named a Jefferson Scholar at the University of Virginia. Yes, we are so, so proud of him, and for those that don't know, the Jefferson Scholarship Program is a full scholarship, a full tuition scholarship to the University of Virginia, and it's highly selective, so I know that he's making Prince William proud, Prince William County proud, and definitely the student senate. All right. Today, Governor Northam announced new guidance for outdoor graduation events. According to his office, graduation events held outdoors will be capped at 5,000 people or 30% of the venue capacity. Events held indoors may have up to 500 people or 30% of the venue capacity. He released this guidance early to help high schools plan graduation. With these new regulations, socially-distanced outdoor graduation ceremonies, possibly on football fields of local high schools or college campuses, are possible, doable, and should be looked at as a first option. My colleague, Ashley Menjivar, wrote a letter in favor of outdoor graduation ceremonies, and I support her statement. COVID is still present, but cases are going down, social distancing is possible outside, masks will be required, and more Virginians are getting the COVID vaccine every day. Additionally, this year, we have already put on in-person events that have been safe, such as in-person learning, SAT testing, and athletic games, which can have up to 250 people there. I am asking that principals, administration, and central office are transparent and include student voice plans regarding graduation, prom, and end-of-the-year testing. Additionally, a countywide graduation guidance plan from the superintendent's office would be appreciated, just so everybody's on the same page. Finally, in regards to final examinations, students are asking for leniency and understanding. Because this school year has been unique, we cannot administer final exams the same way that we have before. I understand that the Office of Student Learning has put a proposal forward, but I have not seen it, so here are some options that the student senate has come up with. One, finals can only help a student's grade, not hurt it. Two, they are optional completely. Three, finals are project-based only. Four, finals are optional and can only help a student's grade. We are open to providing additional student feedback and have been working with principals at each of our individual schools regarding this matter. Thank you all for your time and consideration. I know this was a lot, but I'm happy to follow up with anyone who is interested or has any questions.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Thank you very much. Next up is Dr. Walts, superintendent's time.
Thank you very much, good evening again. I would like to begin tonight with a moment of silence for our three staff members who passed away from COVID-19, since it's been about a year since this all started. Denora Mahia, custodian at Potomac View Elementary, Flor Servantes, food and nutrition services employees, employee at Woodbridge Middle School, and Richard Zuckerneck, math teacher at Garfield High School. Please join me in a moment of silence. I would also like to share a video that was on national broadcast, Jake Tapper from CNN Broadcasting.
Before we go today, we want to remember just one of the more than 528,000 lives lost to COVID in the U.S. Today, we're remembering Richard Zuckerneck, who was a math teacher at Garfield High School in Woodbridge, Virginia, and had battled COVID for the past few months. His principal announced his death in a letter to parents last night. Zuckerneck was known for inspiring even the most reluctant of students in math and in engineering, and he had a really cool job outside of class, serving as an umpire for a Little League World Series regional tournament. To the students and staff at Garfield High and to the Zuckerneck family, may his memory be a blessing.
So that was a very, very nice national tribute, and I did go out to Garfield last week and had an opportunity to talk with the principal and several of the staff members there. I talked with the person he team teaches with, and also the math department chair, who are both very, very close to him, and they reiterated exactly what you just heard, even the most unwilling student he could captivate and draw them into mathematics and help them to enjoy it and also to be successful. I also want to take a moment just to recognize the fact that we've lost several hundred people in Prince William County and across the United States, and we certainly realize that there are parents and loved ones and grandparents, and we all know someone who has suffered or who has passed away, so this tribute is meant to represent all of us in terms of a tribute to any one of us who have suffered or lost their lives to COVID. So a year into the pandemic, it's become clear how crucial it is to ensure equity in education. March is the Virginia School Boards Association Equity and Education Month. As a division, we have been working hard to use equity. As the division, we have been working hard to use equity as a lens when making decisions. Check out this video for more details.
March is Equity and Education Month in Prince William County Public Schools. In 2017, PWCS began addressing equity in our schools through intensive professional development and training modules. The result? Understanding of and accountability for equitable practices at every level of the division. PWCS formed the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity, composed of teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community members, to provide an equity lens for issues facing the division, such as funding allocations based on need and access to resources. School equity teams and partners like the Virginia Department of Education, culturally responsive curriculum specialists, and parents and community leaders continue to ensure that equity, inclusion, and cultural competency reaches all parts of the classroom. The pandemic provided new opportunities to put our equity training to work. Schools provided supplies for virtual and in-person learning. Devices are available to every student. Internet access is available to every student. Meals are provided to all students for free, and students can access materials inside and outside the classroom. As for the future of equity in PWCS, there is more work to be done. By continuing to look at education through an equity lens, we can address bias, promote cultural competency, and truly value diversity in our school division.
So I'm looking forward to seeing all the great things that are going to be done across our school division during Equity Month. Our teachers and staff members continue to shine during the pandemic. I would like to recognize Dr. Patrick Ware, music teacher at Fitzgerald Elementary School, who has recently been named Vice President of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for the American Orth Showwork Association, or AOSA. The new position will oversee the important work to elevate the importance of identifying and supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion throughout all aspects of AOSA's national programs. I would also like to thank our teachers and staff, who have continued to successfully return students in person who have chosen to do so. This has been a tremendous team effort by all our schools and employees, including more than 225 central office and Retirement Opportunity Program employees, also known as ROPpers, who volunteered to work in our schools to cover for staff who were out due to reactions to the second vaccinations. Our school division also continues to earn awards during a pandemic. The Association of School Business Officials International has awarded PWCS with the Meritorious Budget Award for the 2020-21st school budget year. This is the 23rd consecutive year that PWCS has earned this award, and PWCS was the first school division in Virginia to earn this award in 1997. This award recognizes best practices for budget presentations for school districts. Congratulations to John Wallingford, Associate Superintendent for Finance Risk Management, and his staff for their continuous outstanding work in this area. And tonight couldn't be a better night than an 8-0 unanimous vote on the school budget, and I would like to personally thank the school board for their endorsement of the budget. A very exciting way to end my 16th year. Thank you.
Is that it, Dr. Walz?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that report. Next, we'll go to the superintendent's update on the pandemic. Dr. Walz?
Thank you again, and as you know, we've been providing these pandemic updates for the past few months during board matters on the agenda at the request of the chairman as the school board considered the return to in-person learning. Following my update this evening, Ms. Denise Hebner, Associate Superintendent for Special Education and Student Services, who along with her team will provide further details on the latest health information. Now that all grades have returned in person with a virtual option and the decisions have been operationalized at the request of the school board chairman, further pandemic updates after tonight will continue to be provided in our weekly email COVID-19 health updates and other written briefings for the school board on an as-needed basis. PWCS is still waiting for further information from the Virginia Department of Education on the specific amounts that may be available to local school divisions under the American Rescue Plan recently signed into law. PWCS will have to apply to receive the available funds for approved purposes. As these details become available, we will share them all with the school board. And at this time, let me, a couple more quick things here. I'm pleased tonight to announce that for those PWCS employees who currently have students receiving scholarships to attend alphabet, we will be extending those scholarships through the remainder of the school year. Additionally, the county is taking under consideration the same extension for county employees and citizens who are also receiving the alphabet scholarships. The COVID-19 dashboard remains on the PWCS website and will continue to be updated. The numbers of COVID-19 cases in PWCS are dynamic, and as of Monday, March 15th, from March 7th to 13th, we had 49 confirmed cases of students and staff, equal to the previous week, February 28th through March 6th, when we had 71 cases. I will now turn it over to Ms. Hebner for a further health update. Ms. Hebner.
This evening's presentation is streamlined and includes an update on the Virginia Department of Education and Virginia Department of Health guidance, community transmission update, and a review of school impact data. Next slide, please. On this slide, you will see, sorry, next slide. When the slide gets here, on this slide, you will see a comparison of the newly updated CDC guidance with the new updated Virginia Department of Health and Virginia Department of Education guidance that was released on March 9th. This guidance is titled "The Revised Interim Guidance for Reopening Pre-K through 12." This new document incorporates and replaces the interim guidance for reopening for pre-K12 schools that came out in January, the Faze guidance for Virginia schools that was last updated in July, the interim VDH guidance for mitigation measures in the K12 setting, which was last updated in October, and it also incorporates elements of the CDC K-12 operational strategy that was released in February. So at this time, you may be asking yourself, what guidance should we follow? The Virginia Department of Health recommends that the CDC operational strategy be considered, including the revised indicators and threshold. It's best used together with the revised interim guidance for the pre-K12 school opening, school reopening. Both the CDC and the new Virginia guidance stress adherence to all mitigation strategies and that it is critical, no matter what the level of community transmission, that we implement these with fidelity. The Virginia Department of Health recognizes that universal masking for persons ages five and older in schools is required per Executive Order 72, and with the VDOE, they strongly encourage masks during play and sports. As far as distancing, the CDC uses six feet throughout the guidance, but includes to the greatest extent possible during low and moderate transmission. In the Virginia guidance, physical distancing for all levels of transmission is optimal at six feet or more to the greatest extent possible. It recognizes that six feet is not always possible and that three feet is acceptable. It does stress that distancing of less than six feet is not acceptable. In times of substantial and high transmission, a hybrid or reduced attendance model is suggested and intended to maximize opportunities for the physical distancing between students and staff. However, in-person learning may occur if schools are experiencing success with strict mitigation strategies. The next area of comparison is the sports and extracurricular. Both the CDC and the VDH prioritize instruction before sports and extracurriculars. Both state that decisions should be made by school-specific information. With the Virginia guidance, there's a more intentional and explicit process referring to the level of impact school, in the school, and that data, and there's a methodology that is to assess that. So school impact is assessed through outbreak data, information, student absenteeism, staff capacity, and/or assessment of the mitigation strategies and implementation. As far as testing, the CDC and the Virginia Department of Education and Virginia Department of Health suggest that testing be recommended to staff and parents in cases of illness. Both documents suggest screening tests as feasible. It should be noted that if you visit the CDC website, it will show that the CDC does not necessarily or currently recommend that schools conduct symptom screening for all students in grades K through 12 on a routine basis. Next slide, please. In order to provide our schools and our community with information about local metrics, the CDC provides a COVID data tracker. Here you'll see the metrics on a seven-day average that end on March 14th. The positivity rate is right around 6% and falls in the moderate category. The measure for the number of new cases remains just barely in the high category. The threshold to measure for high is greater than 100. Substantial transmission is range 50 to 99. This means that actions should be based on the highest of the two measures. It's important to note that a transition down to substantial would not reduce any of the layered mitigation strategies that have helped us achieve success so far. Next slide, please. Here you'll see the Virginia Department of Health school metrics dashboard that reflects the CDC transmission thresholds. We are currently, for new cases, just again, barely in the high category. We're currently at 100.4 as of March 13th, and as you can see, it is just greater than 100. The positivity rate is currently at 6.2 and is in the moderate category. You'll note that secondary indicators indicate that we are in the low and moderate. Today, the Prince William County Health District shared with us that COVID-like illness emergency visits have increased 11% compared to the previous week. Two of the five districts experienced decreases in COVID-like illness and ED visits compared to the previous week, but visits did increase in Fairfax, Loudoun, and in Prince William. COVID-like illness ED visits decreased or remained stable among most age groups except for age groups from 0 to 9, 40 to 49, and 50 to 59 years of age. Next slide, please. This slide reflects the combined indicators, and again, when the indicators suggest two different levels, the actions correspond to the highest threshold should be considered. At any level of community transmission, all schools have the option to provide in-person instruction, as long as they're being successful and have strict adherence to the mitigation strategies. A virtual option will remain in place for our students. And at this time, I will turn the presentation over to Ms. Teresa Polk.
Okay, good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the board, and Dr. Walz. Next slide, please. Thank you, Mrs. Hebner. On this slide, you will see data regarding those situations in which students had to quarantine during the period of March 1st to March 14th. You will note that most of our close contacts are not ill and are being quarantined per CDC guidelines as a precaution. During this time period, it has been reported to us that 229 students have been quarantined. In the lower part of the same slide, you will see our student positive case data broken out by student learning environment. We see that the majority of our positive cases are for those students in the virtual, 50% virtual, 50% in-person learning, four days a week. In all situations, the number of positive cases account for less than 1% of the student population. Next slide, please. On this slide, you will see data regarding those situations in which staff members had to quarantine during the period of March 1st to March 14th. Again, you will see that most of our close contacts are not ill and are being quarantined per CDC guidelines as a precaution. During this time period, it has been reported to us that 78 staff members have been quarantined. And on the bottom of this slide, you will finally see that our staff members, staff member positive case data broken out by work environment. You will see that our in-person staff members are affected by positive cases at a higher rate than our virtual staff members. In all situations, the number of positive cases account for less than 1% of the staff member population. I will now turn the presentation over to our superintendent, Dr. Walz. Thank you.
And so, were we going to have an update on vaccinations? I can give that myself, or?
Vaccinations, yes. I'm sorry, I apologize. I wasn't supposed to turn it over to you.
Well, it's really good news, Ms. Polk, so I figure you might want to do it.
I just wanted you to get in there with me. Okay, an update on the vaccinations, I apologize. We have had 17,000 second doses have been completed, and that includes Prince William County school staff and community. All Prince William County staff members have been offered the opportunity to receive the first dose of the vaccine, and the majority of our second doses are complete. Second-dose clinics were held on February 19, 23, 24, and 28, and March 1st, 7th, 8th, 14th, and 15th. The clinics have been moved from Unity Reed High School to the Kelly Leadership Center. Navant Health UVA continues to work to partner with the health district to provide vaccines to the community and Prince William County school staff in the future. And again, I must give a shout out to the school nurses, who have been very instrumental in assisting with administration of the vaccines. And now, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Walz.
And I will say amen to that very nice comment to the nurses, and again, what a great job to our whole entire pandemic team and everybody who's been involved from every part of this school division. That's really, really great news. So thank you, Ms. Hebner and your entire team. Thank you, Ms. Hebner, as lead of the pandemic, and everyone who has worked so hard to get us to where we are tonight. So we end tonight's pandemic report on good news, and back to you, Chairman Latif.
That was great news. Thank you, Dr. Walz, and it's not, I don't think it's a hyperbole to say that Ms. Polk, and Ms. Hebner, and you all, everyone in the school division, Navant, have really saved lives. So that effort is, we just can't thank you all enough for the hard work. These clinics have been amazing. Okay, so we'll go on next to the, next 18, what am I at? 18, 18:02. We have a motion on for action. Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board direct the division superintendent and staff to prepare and present to the school board by May 5th, 2021, a reopening plan for the 2021-22 school year, which provides for five days a week of full-time in-person instruction for all students in all grade levels, and further, that the plan provide an option for 100% virtual instruction for all students in all grade levels.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Ms. Williams of the Woodbridge District, seconds. At this point, we'll have a discussion on the motion, and I'll start with Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to begin by thanking Ms. Williams for working with me on this motion, and community members who have reached out repeatedly to request this advancement of our return-to-learning plans for next fall. From the beginning of the pandemic, we have all sought to balance the academic, social, emotional needs of students with the actual risk of transmission in schools. And so as we look ahead to the next six months, I'm reminded of the old adage, which says, "Plan to prepare or prepare to fail." And so for a successful rollout for next fall and for our students and teachers' sake, we must begin to plan now, and that starts with letting our families know what to expect for the fall in a very concrete way. I am confident that we can return all students to five days a week in-person instruction for the 21-22 school year. It really is the best option for our students and staff. I also recognize the need to support families who require access to virtual learning due to particular health needs or other special circumstances. I appreciate the advocacy of members of this board on this issue, and I will let them speak more directly to it. But I'm making this motion for five specific reasons. One, this is what children need. Returning five days a week is essential for academic progress and for the social, emotional, mental, and physical health of children. We have a lot of work to do to help our children through the effects of the pandemic. Returning to a five-day-a-week schedule will greatly assist our efforts in helping children of all ages to be successful learners. Second reason is that this is what families need. Families need certainty of what to expect in the fall. Offering five days a week earns the trust of our families to stay with us. In many cases, decisions are being made right now for deposits on private schools and other options. Moreover, many families who have left last year will not come back, and we do want them to come back. In addition, many families who need schooling five days- In addition, many families who need schooling five days a week cannot afford other schooling options like private schools, which can be very expensive. This has created further inequities due to economic factors. Families continue to bear a heavy burden as they juggle work and family demands under the hybrid model. Increasing numbers of workers are being called back to the workplace, making five days of instruction even more important to our community. The third reason is this is what we can do. We've shown that our mitigation efforts are effective. Our rates of infection are less than 1% of our student and teacher population. We have shown that we can return our students to buildings in a way that is safe, even given higher levels of community transmission. Data from around the nation is increasingly supporting the conclusion that we can safely reduce physical distancing without compromising safety. Schools are not hotbeds of transmission like we once supposed. Continued vaccination will drive down the rate of infection in our communities, and those levels will continue to fall throughout the spring and into the summer. By the end of May, every adult who chooses to be vaccinated will be able to do so, or at least that is the goal. Vaccinations are making a big difference. The fourth reason is this is what we ought to do. Hybrid instruction, while necessary at this time, has proven difficult for teachers and students. And while it was intended to be a stop measure, it's not a long-term, sustainable solution. And especially, the model of hybrid instruction that we've had to employ in many of our classrooms where students follow along on their computers as the teacher teaches to the teacher's computer is less effective, and we all know that this is putting a great strain on our teachers and students. And the fifth reason is this is what we should prepare to do. Our neighboring jurisdictions have announced plans for five days a week, five days in-person instruction in the fall for similar reasons. Offering five days a week in-person instruction is best for students and teachers, and offering flexibility of a virtual option accommodates the special needs and particular circumstances, and it's also very important. So, for these reasons, I urge the board to support this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. And I also want to thank my board member, Ms. Wall, for opening the opportunity for discussion on this motion with me, because we do sit on opposite sides of the spectrum of this. And I think the one thing that we can agree on is that we do need to plan now and inform our parents what our thought process is as a board, what we can expect to look forward to, and really begin this discussion wholeheartedly and look at all the factors involved. I appreciate this motion provides 100% virtual instruction, because that's, I think, where we do differ. I don't believe that in-person, five days a week, is the most valuable option for all of our students. I think this pandemic has really proven that we can provide a better sense of equity for all types of learners by using multiple forms of instruction. I do think that we can agree that hybrid is just not working. And we need to ensure that we provide a pathway for education that is clear for in-person students and for students who do want to stay home and be 100% virtual in the fall. Vaccines are not a cure, and students are not yet eligible for vaccines on whole. They are a safeguard and another layer of mitigation, but they aren't a cure. And with this virus ongoing and mutating, there is still a lot of concern from a lot of families about how we do proceed. If new variants will cause us to end up where we are now, what can we do, and what makes each family feel safe? And as a school division and a public school division, we should be accommodating to that and mindful of that and respectful of that, not only for our students, but for our staff members as well. And I know that Prince William County Schools has taken the lead on returning students to buildings during this pandemic, being out in the forefront of all the ways that we provide instructions and safeguards for our students and staff, and I see no reason why we should change that course now. I know that many other school divisions are planning for five-day or this or that, but we have not looked to other school divisions. We have been a lighthouse during this pandemic, and I would like for Prince William County Schools to continue to do so. I just want to make sure that when we do enter down this road, that our virtual program is just as robust and well-thought-out as our in-person instruction and provides those students with the same sense of community and academic opportunities as the students who do choose to return in person. And I think, too, we also need to consider that we are an overcrowded school division, and in order to be effective in our mitigation strategies, we need to take that into consideration, and providing 100% virtual option really is a part of that consideration. If every student is not sitting in a seat in a building, it reduces our overcrowding issue, and that's just a fact, and it's something that really needs to be looked at and valued. I respect everyone's right, whether you choose to learn in a building or you choose to learn from the comfort of some other environment, but I think that we need to acknowledge both. We need to let our schools, our school families know that we are serious in our thinking, and we need to continue to provide as many equitable educational opportunities as we can and really continue to be a model for Northern Virginia area and the rest of the state in the way that we do that. And I just, again, would like to thank Ms. Wall for working with me on this and for us being examples of how two individuals who sit on different ends of the spectrum can meet in the middle, think together collaboratively, and set an example for all of those out there in the community, because I do believe, and I think, Ms. Wall, correct me if I'm wrong, we are all tired of being pitted against one another as to which one is better, when we have learned that there are valuable options and things for both or all of us that we can move forward on together. So, thank you, and I hope that the board will support this, and love to hear other input from board members.
I see Mr. Wilk, and then we'll go to Ms.
Thank you, Ms. Williams and Ms. Wall. I appreciate the resolution. I think it is a good compromise. As someone who's kind of been more in the favor of in-person, I will say one thing I disagree in some sense that was said earlier is, I don't think it's special circumstances or illness anymore. The New York Times had an article that virtual education is here to stay. The days of the brick-and-mortar traditional schools, those days are done. School systems all over the country just used millions and millions of dollars of federal stimulus funds to buy software, one-to-one Chromebooks, iPads, et cetera. The opportunities of what we have the potential to do utilizing virtual instruction, even having the tools for in-person to be global citizens, to have intervention strategies, it's just unbelievable the opportunities that we have. And we're fortunate to be in a state where we don't technically have school of choice, where we have neighboring school systems that are on top of each other in Ohio and Michigan in the Midwest, who are competing to get kids to leave one school system and to enroll in the other. That's the opportunity for them, offer a robust virtual option. So, my ask would be, same with what you were saying, is moving forward, we need a clear plan, and it can't just be having kids enroll in virtual Virginia, because if we have that, we pay for those kids to enroll, and then we're losing kids and we have staff. We need our own robust system and our own plan that's very deliberative and well-thought, especially at the secondary level, because when building those master schedules, as I've learned to do, thanks to Mr. Malgrew and Mr. Beach and all that good stuff, watching all that at a high school level, we need to be very deliberate in how we do this. What courses are going to be offered pretty much only in-person as an option, or will kids have to come in? What courses will kids have virtual? Will the kids have to commit to a semester of virtual so that the schedule doesn't change at least? Or will it be a full year? These are things we have to sort out. I'm not giving my position. I'm just saying, these are questions that we have to sort out, especially at the secondary level, when we have all these different courses. But to go back to what, you know, Ms. Williams said, and well, Ms. Wall, I ultimately agree about the in-person need, as I've always, but like what Ms. Williams was saying, Williams was saying is, we've been at the forefront of this, the lighthouse. We can really leverage the opportunity of technology to do so much more now, to do so much more. Absences, vacations, these things that we can do to make sure that we continue instruction, extended summer options. I mean, not all, we talk about equity, right? I mean, we have programs that sometimes kids are not able to go to because it might be at one school or the other. Think about the ability to consolidate resources. Think about the money that we can save in transportation. Think about having professional development that's normally hosted at the KLC that everyone has to drive to and we pay mileage for with staff. That could be done virtually. There are just so many opportunities, and what we can do moving forward with this, it's very exciting to see what we can do. So, to your point, yes, 100% support trying to find a model for five days. I think concurrent hybrid has been very difficult, seeing it firsthand and walking in classrooms, and, you know, it has not been easy. It's definitely been a Band-Aid right now to try to make something happen, but I think as much as we can move away from that model, and there may be situations where, very select situations in classes where it might have to be a method deployed, but offering that in-person or the virtual selection, I think, is the way to go. And I'm excited about the opportunities and possibilities of what we can really do with technology and virtual instruction moving forward. So, I thank both of you for coming up with this resolution, and I fully support it.
Ms. Jesse.
First of all, I want to say upfront that I support full-day learning, and I really think we need to get back to five days a week. Now, I read that Fairfax came up with their five-day plan, but the difference between Fairfax and what we're doing tonight is that the superintendent presented his plan. I love the plan of looking at both, but I don't think that the board should become the superintendent. And I think the superintendent, I think it should be on for information and a recommendation to the superintendent, but for one thing, I, you know, I didn't know about this plan until late because it came on there generally, but there are several factors I think we need to consider. First, again, I want to say this again, I believe we need to go back to full day, five days a week, and virtual for some. I'm not sure, when you look at the virtual, I was at high school yesterday, I mean, earlier this week, and there were three kids in the room, and the rest were virtual. I don't know if we know what these kids are going to do, because there is a different group of kids, and I think some of those kids, we need to go back and figure out why some of these kids did not come back, and whether the use of space, the use of our staffing, all those are factors, but I think the superintendent is the person who should be making these decisions. And I think that I have this thing about waiting till the dust settles, and the dust has not settled. We're getting a new superintendent. Have we factored in that we vote for this, that this new superintendent is not going to have the authority to develop a plan? I think the superintendent, we haven't asked him if he's planning to develop a plan. So, I just, you know, you know, the superintendent and I have had differences, but the last meeting of us, so I think we've taken away the authority from him, and I think that this is a good recommendation. I love the recommendation, but I think that the superintendent, like the superintendent in Fairfax, or I have the Washington Post, he came to the board with a plan, and I think we need to let the superintendent come with a plan, but I think we should also let him know that we recommend five days, because I do recommend five days. I don't think that the board should vote without input from the superintendent, and I think we said at the last time we voted, we said the superintendent had the right to make the decision, but what we're doing, we are making decisions for him and not allowing him to bring the plan to us. And he's going to have to, at some point, be in concert or at least have some conversation with the new superintendent coming in. So, for that reason, I can't vote for this, but the idea and the concept, I really like the concept.
Ms. Williams, and then I'll go to Ms. Zargarpur. Okay, that's fine. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I support this motion. I think it's important to set expectations, to set them early. It's been an interesting year, to say the least, but whatever we can do to make concurrent instruction not a thing, it would be like a huge priority. It requires time, not so much maybe in elementary school, because I think they have a lot more wiggle room, but, and some, we'll just say some schools maybe more than others, but middle and high school have a lot more scheduling concerns with their classes and the levels that they offer. And an advantage to virtual school can be that maybe a seventh or eighth grader can access some high school courses, and perhaps that's something that they could be, you know, I know some children take classes over the summer to just add more credits or free up their schedules. So, there's a lot of potential for how virtual can be used anyway, moving forward, but I really think it's important to set expectations, and the more time we have to work on this, the better. I am grateful that Ms. Wall and Ms. Williams worked on this over the week and were able to put this together. I plan on supporting it.
I'll go to, let me do, Ms. Williams had a quick thing, and then I'll go to Ms., okay, Ms. Jackson. I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson.
Okay. Five days a week asks us to continue to maintain a growth mindset. This virus and the immunizations have changed, and may continue to change what is best practice. We also must be able to adjust with what the pandemic throws at us following CDC/VOH regulations is a must. The leader of operations has access to qualitative and quantitative data that the board does not when implementing plans. I look to them for a way to create a robust virtual program without impacting the funding of schools. Moreover, I hope we can learn from our experiences that concurrent teaching and the stress that it places on staff and students is not working. I strongly believe that we cannot and should not ask teachers to simultaneously plan for five days in-person and five days online. I also want to thank Ms. Williams and Ms. Wall for collaborating on this resolution and seeking feedback. I strongly believe that collaboration is what is needed, and I appreciate your leadership on this.
I'll go to Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. I want to be very clear in my ask for this and speaking on this motion. I think historically, when the school board has made an ask of the superintendent, we ask for some sort of final whatever version, final plan, final implementation. It's set in stone and gold, and we just vote up or down. I'm looking at this as an opportunity to have the public know that we are thinking about this as a school division, as a board. We're looking for what Dr. Walts' input and his staff's input is. I think one of the biggest takeaways from this pandemic is that you really can't have a final anything during a pandemic, but I think it's important that we, as a board, speak to this and say, this is an appropriate time to open this conversation. We're not here to make a decision for the superintendent. This is not by design to force the superintendent to present us an inflexible, absolutely perfect. This is gold what we're going to go for in the fall either. I don't think we take advantage enough of the opportunity to use these meetings as discussion points and opportunities to see what staff is thinking, what we should be thinking of as a board, how we should be having this conversation publicly so that everybody is aware. I don't want it to be interpreted as we're trying to do superintendent's job, because I don't think that wasn't really the intent. I'm sorry? Yeah, so, and I think that that's important to note, because Dr. Walts has been, at least in my tenure, one of the most professional superintendents and pristine plan presenters, well-thought-out, considered, presentation, I mean, just phenomenal. And I'd hate to have him felt locked into something that he's going to present, and then we're going to vote on May 5th, and that's just going to be it forever and ever. I don't think you can do these things in pandemic. So, that's, I just wanted to follow up with that, just of my history and knowledge. Haven't seen Dr. Walts pull out his note card and pen, but that is his historical practice, and I think we've sort of learned as a board to kind of shift and start these conversations and develop these things, instead of always just having to have it one way or an up-or-down vote. I think it's time to be a little bit more of a two-way street when it comes to these type of discussions and activities. So, I'd also like to hear a little bit of input from Dr. Walts while we were in discussion about the feasibility of the timeline, what he thinks he can present to us in May, just a little bit of expectations, because I don't want the public to be misconstrued and think May 5th, this is going to be it for the fall year, or anything like that. So, that's pretty much all I had to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Let me just address, you know, that, and I'd like to hear from Dr. Walts. Dr. Walts and I chatted about this briefly the other-
Dr. Waltz and I chatted about this briefly the other day, and I know he had mentioned that he's already been thinking about what to do for the fall, and, you know, we've chatted about his general, always, you know, concerns about when we like to announce stuff, we want to get it right. And I think the record of what we've accomplished over this year has been really, really amazing. Dr. Waltz, could you address your thinking on the fall for five days? And, you know, the board, again, as I had mentioned in our conversation, you know, we want to provide some reassurance to the public, for those that are anxious about what are we going to do in the fall, that we do have a direction, and this resolution really, this directive really just asks the superintendent to come up with his plan and his version for what he'd like to do in the fall, regards to both virtual and in-person, recognizing also that if we're still under a state of emergency, we may have to abide by SB 1303, which is the new state law. So, Dr. Waltz, did you have any comments here? You're on mute, sir.
Is that better? Okay. So, yes, you called me day before yesterday about the directive, and, you know, certainly, I believe I speak for most people, that we hope, given the progress with vaccinations and keeping safety at the forefront of our decision-making, we've already been making plans to have instruction five days a week, beginning with the new school year in August. We also, if health concerns prevail, or quite frankly, whether they do or not, expanding our virtual opportunities as we've talked in the budget work sessions and throughout this entire pandemic, but more specifically through the funding, where we talked about creating as part of our rollout of our technology plan a virtual high school, and then putting in a position to do a pilot at an elementary school. So I guess my reaction to this, and also, you know, we can make every effort to bifurcate teaching online and try to avoid the concurrent teaching, but with some classes where you have one teacher who's teaching, you know, AP something that there's only one of in a high school, there are certainly some challenges to the virtual piece of this. I guess what I would be more comfortable with, and I can't think of a single time I've done this in 23 years of being a superintendent, but since you're asking me my opinion, I would simply ask that you insert in the last line after virtual instruction, to the extent possible for all students in all grade levels. Because to stand up a completely independent program virtually in this length of time, we haven't talked about doing that for this fall until literally this resolution came forward day before yesterday. So, I mean, obviously, if you vote it as it stands, we'll certainly do our best to come back and tell you what we think we can realistically do. You know, I don't have a lot to lose, being a short timer, but I will say this, I think the worst thing we could do is come back with a plan that fully promises everything this resolution says, knowing full well that's just logistically, or for whatever reason, it's impossible. Certainly, planning school for five days a week, we've had, you know, 100 years' experience in that. And again, our planning is moving forward with that, and our planning is expanding the virtual. But I think with the virtual, it's going to take a combination of options that would include what we do in our own school division and expansion of that, but also the efforts that have been put into Virtual Virginia from the briefing that we received from the state superintendent, there are some real possibilities there as well. And they're standing up a full virtual program for elementary at a significantly reduced rate, and for some, for at least some of the learners, it's going to be free. So that's my input, that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. So, just some of the logic, just on the reason why we said 100% virtual is, and it hasn't been signed into law yet, but the concern that SB 1303 would require us to do 100% virtual for everyone, if those students asked, if we're still under the state of emergency. So I think that was the logic where that came from. But I don't think, if there's any board members with an objection, the line would say, basically, to the greatest extent possible, at the end of that last sentence. Is there, Ms. Williams?
I think this is a good opportunity for us to know, and the public to know, if we can or can't do something. I mean, I think that's part of planning, and that's sort of what I was stating earlier. If it isn't feasible, if this isn't right, then we'll know in that plan. And it's not a deficit on you, Dr. Waltz, or the administration. It is more of a realistic option of what we can and can't do, by saying, you know, we couldn't, and I'm just throwing this out there as an example, we couldn't do 100% virtual for kindergarten because XYZ reason, this would be our alternative, or there is no alternative. That's where I'm coming from. And also allowing for, I don't know, maybe you had, I'm going to use an expression I use in my house, like a super-secret spy plan for this great virtual program that, like, under other circumstances, you know, we couldn't kick off, for whatever reason, but now here's an opportunity. We sort of don't know those things. We've only hinted around this conversation in the budget and those times, and I think this would be a great opportunity to really have that discussion. And if there isn't anything, then there just isn't anything. And I think this board is, if it isn't, please correct me, board members, but I think this board is okay with that, and okay with learning those things. So we know how to sort of look towards the future, because we understand better what our capabilities are and what they aren't, and not just in a manner that we're used to discussing, which would be sort of siloed, right, in a budget time, or by single request only, we talk about this subject matter in this particular light. And I'm just sort of looking for more general opportunity to have this discussion, so we really understand. Because we don't want, you know, you've been our superintendent for 16 years and done a fantastic job, but there may be some things that you would introduce to us that might be institutional knowledge that we'd leave with you, not intentionally, but just because you're, you know, this is the life that you lead and have been leading for over a decade. So that's where I'm coming from. I can't speak for everybody else, but that's sort of what I'm looking for. And a motion is really the best way to do that, and I didn't want to lock it in, to make it one way or the other, or so definitive.
Right. And before I go to Ms. Jesse, just to clarify, Dr. Waltz, I think this was just asking for a plan. We weren't intending to vote on any plan when you come back. It was just something where we start letting the public know, we are preparing for this, and if we come back and we can't do, as Ms. Williams said, 100% virtual for XYZ reasons, or Virtual Virginia's providing this great thing, we can concentrate on our part of it. That's really what we'd like to know and see where we're at. Yeah?
Yeah. If I could just respond to both your comments and Ms. Williams. So, you know, if you just leave the resolution to read exactly as it was read, I'm actually more comfortable with that if we don't have a lot of extemporaneous, like there absolutely cannot be any concurrent teaching. Teachers absolutely have to be bifurcated. We can't use Virtual Virginia, it has to be better than that. If we can just have none of those other restrictions, you know, I accept it as written. Let me just give you, I'll try to keep it very, very brief. We have some teachers who enjoy teaching concurrently and can do it successfully, and we have others that don't feel the same way. So I'm simply saying, if we can explore all the options and see, you know, logistically what we can do, and bring back this plan, you know, you could leave it as it is. It's just, please, don't layer on the restrictions until we see what we can do. We'll try to optimize and bring the very best plan back.
The entire, most of the board here is shaking their head, saying, you know, and if you look at the language as is, we don't, each board member layered on their own sort of personal opinion of where they were, and their personal, and just like this entire year has been contentious on where we sit on these matters, we didn't put those words in this resolution. We just ask you to come to us with the best plan you think we can do for Prince William County schools on a virtual, especially since, if that's the law, you know, and we might have to do that, or, you know, the five days, we'd love to have us back, return to normal. I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to Ms. Jesse, because she had her hand up, then I'll go to Ms. Wall. Ms. Jesse.
Okay. Ms. Williams and I talked about this today, because I just learned about this plan today, so I had no input to this. However, I will say again, I support five days of learning, and I support virtual learning. But there are questions, when I looked, I asked one of the principals at the high school, I said, "Why do you think these kids didn't come back?" So I thought about it. She said, "Well," you know, and I said, "Well, they've been at home, they can get up when they want to get up, they don't have to come to school." So the thing that the Fairfax superintendent said, "Will we have virtual learning for all, or will we just let students choose, if they're over 18, not to come to school if they don't want to?" So there are all kinds of factors, and I just, if Dr. Waltz is pleased with this, I will support it. But I want you guys to hear what he said. He said the following, "We have been planning for this." They have looked at the factors. We don't even know some factors. And I don't, and I think, Dr. Latif, you said something that was important to me, that we're not going to vote on this, because you've got a new superintendent coming in. You have to realize that. So I can support something where we don't vote on it, and we give the superintendent the authority that he should have had before, when we, in my mind, just in my mind, that we said we'd give you authority, but then we took it away. I just don't want that to happen again, because we have a new person coming in, and I don't want that new person to think that we are going to, within two or three days, come up with a vote that ties that person to our date and five days and 100% virtual. I just think that we need to really think it through and look at the metrics. We think everything is going to be great, but when he comes with his plan, if this plan, I just don't want us to say we're going to vote on it, and we don't like your plan, we're going to vote on it. I just think that we have to give the superintendent the authority that we said he should have, as long as I can feel that from this plan. And I have to ask you, Ms. Williams, and I have to ask you, Ms. Walls, because apparently the two of you came up with this plan. Are we going to be back where the superintendent comes in and we, and we say you have the authority, but we take it away from him?
Okay. I'm going to just go to Ms. Wall, and then Ms. Williams, and then I think we can wrap up the discussion.
So, the intent behind this, more than anything, is to let families know what we're going to offer in the fall, and time is of the essence. So it's always good to be really straightforward with, you know, with families, so they know what we're thinking and what we're planning. Now, obviously, the language is very sparse on purpose to allow for flexibility. That was the intent, that we let people, the public, know what we're thinking about, and that the superintendent and staff have full responsibility to think of the options and think what they can do, and offer, you know, offer something within these very broad parameters. So that's, you're exactly right, Dr. Waltz. You were thinking, you said, just, you were already thinking five days in-person for everyone, and that's what this provides, lets people know that they can rely on it and plan for it. That's really important for our division going forward, and for families making really critical decisions this week and next week for other options if we don't provide this. Now, the language is written, I think you're right, Dr. Waltz, it doesn't preclude the existence of some concurrent instruction. That may have to happen in some of our very specialized high school classes, for instance, where maybe you have one or two students who choose to be 100% virtual, but, you know, the class is conducted in-person, so they, you know, we use our technology and they zoom in. There are a number of, I'm not, you know, I'm not the expert, we're not the experts on this, but I know that our superintendent and staff are, and they can figure these things out, and there's absolutely room for that. It's also not implying that we're going to vote on this. This is just, please bring us a plan and let the public know. It's more for the benefit of the public, let the public know what we're thinking. And certainly, as the pandemic evolves, as it will, and hopefully evolves in a good direction, then, you know, we can have other options within this basic framework of five days a week of instruction in-person with a virtual option. And so, yeah, there are many options that we, there are many ways that we could do this. But I think the way that it's written is, does allow for the flexibility that is needed.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. Yeah, I have no desire to have a vote on a plan presented. It is purely for information only. It is to allow the public to get a little insight on what we're thinking as a school division. I have not been a fan this entire time of changing the superintendent's plan when it's presented, and even when we did so at our very first vote, I mean, you know, I put up a minor tantrum to make sure that we stopped, so that we could include him in the discussion, and to ask questions that, like, we just wouldn't think of, because we're not superintendents. So I'm going to continue to hold that position. I am not, as I said before, any plan presented, I don't believe it should be set in stone. I think there are a lot of considerations, as Ms. Jesse said, and this is not to lock us into anything, but I think it is to give the public and us as board members an opportunity to think about what it would look like in the fall, to see what Dr. Waltz thinks it would look like in the fall. Again, I cannot reiterate enough, I think Dr. Waltz has done a stellar job in leading us through this pandemic, presenting us with information and opportunities on what we should or should not be doing or thinking about during the pandemic. I will continue to support Dr. Waltz and his efforts with that. I would like to see, as we have before, have all levels of involvement in this plan and opportunities for input, teachers specifically. That's always an ask. So Ms. Jesse reminded me of that, and I think that we'll continue with that theme. But I can't emphasize enough that this is not a plan to be voted on. This is not a plan to tie Dr. Waltz or any division's staff's hands and say this is an absolute must of what the fall would look like. This is just an opportunity to have a discussion and to show the public that we are thinking of these things in a timely manner, right? Because exactly, I think Ms. Wall makes a good point, most of us parents are thinking about spring activities, fall activities, what we're going to do. We've heard from our constituents, people who do not want to return to the school division if there isn't going to be a virtual option, people who do want to return, who don't want to return if there isn't a five-day option. And this sort of helps families make that decision, or at least give them some guidance on which way we're looking at, as a school division, we may head, so that they can think about those things, and I think that's important. I have constituents in my district who don't, have no plans right now of thinking about five days a week in-person. Ms. Wall has plenty of people who are like, "Why are we not in five days a week in-person right now?" So it's really just sort of, just kind of cover our bases and have a discussion, that's what I'm looking for. So I'm going to leave it with that.
Okay. Dr. Waltz?
Could you give me just a chance to make a comment before the vote? I want to make sure I've heard from all the board members, or are they done?
No, I didn't, let me check if Ms. Ralston had her hand up. Did, Ms. Ralston, did you want to add anything? I know I didn't hear from you.
Yes, I did, but it's gotten so convoluted. One, I'm confused, and two, I would wait to see whatever you bring.
Okay, great. And Ms. Zargarpur? Oh, you're good. Okay, I think that was it. Dr. Waltz?
Okay. So my closing comment would be this, one of the things I've learned to do many years ago is I try to put myself in other people's shoes, and what would they think, kind of playing devil's advocate to myself. So I want to clarify something. Again, you know, you can leave the resolution as it is, but I wanted to tell you why I was thinking of those words and why they may not be necessary. So let's say I'm watching this tonight, and I'm asking myself, "How could the superintendent say, to the extent possible, on virtual, when you're doing it now?" So that's what I want to clarify. We can definitely do as good or better as we're doing now for kids to be 100% virtual, or go to school five days a week in-person, which we're pretty much experts at. I would like to say, just to complete this... I would like to say, just to complete this, that I'm so impressed by the creativity and all the ambitious work that our teachers, support staff, administration have done, making the virtual product better and better, I think, every day. And it's been amazing. It's been a journey of a lifetime in a year. But what I will simply say to you is that what I would like to bring back is also what we are currently working on. We have quite a number of people working on some very creative endeavors with virtual. So we have, we have plans that I would like to share with you that day that we believe might be very attractive to certain students who may still want to do part in-person and part virtual because of childcare issues, because of jobs they may have. We have some things that I think will be very attractive to people in addition to just making one choice or the other. So if the resolution includes five days virtual, we know we can do that. Five days in-person, we know we can do that. And some other options as well, I'm good to go.
So it doesn't preclude that, Dr. Walz? And you, this board is, I have to tell you, would be thrilled to hear of these creative things. And, you know, we just want, again, it's about telegraphing to the public where we stand on this and where this division believes. And it's good to hear your, you know, sort of thought process in the sense that you were thinking five days in the fall, you were already, you know, on that, and I think that's just important to let the public know. And this board, you know, we've been through a lot this year, and I think this was the idea behind this. And timeliness is an issue because we know the planning for all of that creative new stuff and getting back to five days is the work you're doing right now. And it can't be started July 1, it can't be started August 1. Yeah, I mean, and so, and that's the reason we asked for this. So thank you for this. And again, recognize that in a month, we would love to hear from you, this board would love to weigh in in a collaborative process on those great ideas, and we know you're going to deliver that kind of effort, which you've always done. So we can't thank you enough. So I'm going to vote to support this motion as well and just go ahead. At this point, we'll go for the vote and please vote. And Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Can I have the vote up?
Am I on the right?
Yep, you're right. You're right, Ms. Ralston, we got it. I can hear you. And so Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to board matters. And while we have like a full group here, which side should we start on? Mr. Wilk.
For the act of brevity, I'm good tonight.
That's two in a row. Outstanding, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you to the teachers and administrators at Ellis Elementary School and Marcelo Middle School for allowing me to stop by to see your wonderful schools. I'm also thankful to the principals who spoke tonight. I know that they, all principals and administrators, along with teachers, the students, the English learners, learners, TA, special education, hearing itineraries, APE, autism specialists, food service workers, custodians, and other essential staff have been in the building since September, and I am very grateful. I also want to thank all the other Brentsville principals for taking time to either speak with me, Zoom with me, or email me about how their staff is doing and input on the budget. As the board talks about data, I just want to say to all the teachers out there, it's not a reflection of the effort of the teachers. It is only so that we know how to act as a governing body, or at least that's my opinion of it, how I would act as a governing body. I would also encourage the division to considering providing the whole picture, holistic approach when providing us data, so that a student's achievement is not defined by one test. And then lastly, I believe it is imperative, as demonstrated tonight, that we need to collaborate in order to successfully finish the school year. And for the public to please continue to follow CDC guidelines, or as Ms. Zargarpur guidelines every meeting, because our students, face-to-face instruction depend on our choices. Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chairman. I have continued to spend time at the vaccination clinics that our division is running with the assistance of Novant. And I just want to thank everybody in the division who has been involved in that. It's continuing to be amazing. Amazing experience, lots of compliments from staff and community and with our valued community partners. It's just been really awesome. And I've really enjoyed spending time there, serving, giving of my time to help in such an awesome thing that we've been doing. So I want to thank Ms. Hebner and her team and everybody else. I have taken time to speak with most of the principals in the Gainesville district this last week to ask them their thoughts on how Return to Learn is going in their buildings and their thoughts on the budget, which is one of the main reasons why I supported the budget, is in talking with teachers and principals and getting their input on how they feel that this will assist them and their students in their journey as learners. This week I was, or I guess it was last week, I attended a Battlefield football game again because I have an ability to get into those games as a parent, and it was very special. We cheered for the seniors from the Marching Bobcats this year. It's their final season of marching band, and they are grateful that they were able to play at three games this, well, they have one more to go. They've played at two and they'll play at one more. So I'm really thankful for those kids and for their positive attitudes to deal with what has been really a very hard year. I was also able to find out a little bit about VEX robotics competition that was held at Bull Run Middle School on March 6th under the direction of Denise Carroll. And I was surprised to learn that we've actually had a lot of robotics going on in our division, which is really awesome. And there were some teams there from middle school and high school who competed in a very socially distancing mitigation acceptable way, and they were thrilled to be there on the fields. For many of them, it was the first time their robots actually got on the fields and got to move around. And there were some older former students who came up, came to help and were able to give those kids, you know, the younger students, some really good suggestions for the robots. So I'm really happy to hear that that was happening. The greatest concern that I hear from my constituents in the Gainesville district is for five days a week, five days a week instruction in the fall. So I really do appreciate the support on that motion. They want to know what's coming in the fall. They want to be Prince William County students, they want to stay with the division, and they want their kids to have that option. The second greatest concern I hear is people want to know, as metrics improve, if we can expand the two-day-a-week in-person to four-day-a-week in-person, because kids are thriving and really appreciating the opportunity to be with their teachers. Never has there been as much enthusiasm for going to school as there has been in the last month or so. And I think we should capitalize on that. And I think if we can mitigate, mitigate it, we should, we should look into that with serious, serious thought, especially if the CDC revises its guidance yet again to allow for three feet of distance being acceptable. So I just want to thank everybody for supporting this motion tonight and thank you for your hard work on the board. And everybody across the division, thank you so much for your hard work as well.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Latif. I don't have a whole lot to say. I am excited to hear more about our reopening plans for the fall or what that would look like. I can't emphasize enough that I have no intention from my perspective to vote on this plan, lock the superintendent in, or make decisions for him. But I think as a board, we're learning and growing to ask questions and know, think about things, to try to remember to think about things or be knowledgeable of things that all of us may not think of because we're not the superintendents, not to overstep bounds. But it's to be more responsible when we, it is time to make decisions and to be more knowledgeable. I also really appreciate the opportunity to continue to advocate for those who do want to remain virtual for whatever reason, be it that we are still in a pandemic, be it that they are thriving and succeeding virtually, and to continue to advocate for virtual learning. It is not going anywhere. And part of what future companies, what companies out there are asking for are digitally competent citizens. And I think that that is our responsibility, and I will continue to state that I think that one of the greatest blessings out of this pandemic is the opportunity to embrace virtual education or digital education. And I think that we should really recognize that the leveling of playing field that it has provided for a lot of our students and our students' families. A lot of families came into this not knowing how to work in computer and now are computer literate. And there's so much value in that. And we don't speak enough about all of the good things that have come from this pandemic. And I think it is time to do so. And to end my comments, I also want to thank Dr. Walz again, and secondarily this board, but primarily Dr. Walz, because Prince William County really has been a leader in how we educate our students in this pandemic. We were the first ones to bring any students back in a building on day one, and we don't celebrate that enough and we don't talk about it enough. And I just would like to see us continue as a division to be a lighthouse for other divisions to look at and spend less time comparing what other divisions are doing to Prince William, but it should be other divisions looking at Prince William for what we are doing as we continue to lead the path. And finally, if we could as a board talk a little bit more about SOLs publicly so that parents can understand what it means when you opt out of an SOL, how that affects the division, what are the pros and cons. It doesn't need to be a 15-page PowerPoint, but I think that there's a lack of understanding, and I think it's critical right now for our parents and our students and our families to understand at what grade level, what impact that makes if you choose not to take an SOL, and what that will look like as we bring students in for SOL testing. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Jessie.
Good evening. As you know, I have been, I am now limited, but I am out and I have been out and about. And I went on what I call a gratitude tour for my schools. And many of you know that I often give these cups away. So this is a cup that I presented to my district, and it's a gratitude cup. And the gratitude cup says, "This gratitude cup is for you, for your cups are full and running over." But I, and I didn't, I'd like to share just a few thoughts for all the teachers because I wasn't presumptuous enough to say that I should give a cup to other districts, but I think that all of us would share with the first couple of thoughts in this tribute. It says, "To everyone in the fields of learning that made opening schools a success, this cup is for you. To those who drove buses, fed the students, managed the phones in the office, cleaned the buildings and maintained them, this cup is for you. To all that taught, teachers, teacher assistants, specialists, and athletic staff, this cup is for you. To all principals, administrators, central office staff, and volunteers, this cup is for you. To every nurse who managed the school staff environment and worked in concert with the health department and hospitals, this cup is for you." It says, "My cup is full of gratitude and amazement, really, to all of you who are touching students daily, when I see how truly dedicated you are to the goals of this system. Your cup was so full that it sometimes overflowed, but these teachers and these staff, they just found another cup." And so I think that all of us can agree to that. I went, I had a wonderful time. I visited some schools, and I want to share just a couple of things, and I don't have a lot of time here. But Woodbridge High School, kudos to the facilities people. I don't know if they're still here, but that school is amazing. The glass, that new gymnasium, I could not believe how beautiful it was, really magnificent. And for me, I think because I do a lot of decorating, maybe because I'm a female, but I looked at the brick, and the brick from 45 years ago now matches the new brick. It's all in concert. And Antietam, I've been to several schools, but Antietam, I came during dismissal, and I cannot tell you how, what I felt when I saw all those kids with masks. They were in line, the parents were in line, and I just want to thank Dr. Walz and his staff. And to the teachers, you will be included in this next phase. Thank you.
Ms. Zargarpur, sorry, Ms. Ralston.
I'll just pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'll make this very quick. I did get a chance to meet with the principals, the high school principals in the Coles District for my three schools, and some of the staff and some of the teachers, just to hear about how things have been going and what they, you know, were looking at in terms of the future. So I will just reiterate that as much as we can start planning today and setting expectations will be good for August and September. Please do not forget to wear your mask, wash your hands, keep your distance. If you're not feeling well, stay home. Last thing, I want to also just take just a moment. This pandemic has been really, really hard for everybody. And Dr. Walz mentioned our three employees earlier. And in his comments, he also discussed how this has touched everyone's lives. And to begin healing and moving forward, I mean, it seems like there's so many bright things on the horizon. We have the vaccine, our numbers are getting lower. Please still remember kindness, still remember that we all are receiving information out of this pandemic and transmitting information in our own ways. So with that, I just want to say, have a good night, take care of yourselves, God bless.
Okay, Ms. Zargarpur's record of continuing to recommend we wash our hands has continued to lead us down to a 6% positivity rate, or 6.2, Ms. Hebner, and we're right at 100.4. We are right about to break back into the yellow here. So we need to continue doing everything Ms. Zargarpur recommends. You know, I'd like to echo Ms. Wall's statement and ask the superintendent and the staff to consider, you know, if there is space as we move forward over the next few weeks and, you know, if there's smaller groups of classes, maybe allowing some students, if principals could decide to do four days a week for those kids that are going in. I know there are special considerations given, especially at the special ed level, but if there is space and we, metrics change, I urge you all to consider, you know, expanding the in-person as we move forward, or at least allowing the kids to go from two to four days, those who've chosen to go in. So thank you. This night has been a huge night, and I listened to all your remarks, and so I'll be the only one in board matters to say, we passed an incredible budget this evening. This budget is Dr. Walz's 16th budget, and the budget, in the tradition of Prince William County Schools, is always the superintendent's proposed budget until this evening, where it becomes the Prince William County School Board's adopted budget and the budget for our entire division for the next fiscal year. And so tonight, it becomes our budget. And Dr. Walz, on the four budgets I've sat, they have all been unanimous. I don't know what the votes were in prior budgets, but I want to congratulate you for putting together an incredible budget this year in the context of the most challenging times we have ever faced as a school division, as a Commonwealth, and as a country. And so I can't thank you enough, your finance team, John Wallingford, all of the folks in the finance office, so many of them, so many names, so many folks, so many people we don't see regularly, and who've just done incredible work. And this is just something that we should celebrate. There are the highlights of this budget, please, they're on the Prince William County Twitter feed. Dr. Walz has been sharing them over the last few weeks. The highlights are on our Facebook page, their highlights are on the website, and those are a 5% raise for teachers, a dollar per hour raise for teaching assistants, there is pre-K expansion programs throughout the division, there is more monies for economically disadvantaged students per school. There are some fantastic, really good things in this budget that will move this division forward. So I can't thank this board enough for, again, voting unanimously on an incredible budget. And we are excited to move forward with this for the next fiscal year. With all of that, I wish everyone a wonderful evening. This meeting is adjourned.